Be leaving.
Go ahead.
After the first public hearing, I'll be leaving the meeting. I just want you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All set, Steve?
All right. The chair notes the time is six oh five. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZBA chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Craig Meadows.
Present.
Mr. Everel Henry.
Present.
Bill White.
Present.
Mr. David Slobodar.
Present.
The quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Chris Breschrup, planning director for the town, and Mr. Rob Wachilla, a planner for the town. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff and may be viewed via the Town of Amherst YouTube channel and the ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or to gather additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. The chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where the information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board does not rule by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of the hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing for the variance to file its decision. No decision is final until a written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda is minutes, approval of meeting minutes or consideration of approval of meeting minutes from March 28, 2024. A public hearing on ZBA-FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Massachusetts Solar LLC. Request for a special permit under Section 3.340 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 9.35 megawatt DC, 4.4 megawatt AC, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array spanning 41 acres on a 102-acre site with accompanying battery energy storage system at three parcels of land owned by WB Cows Inc., identified as MAP 9B Parcels 11 and 12 and MAP 9D Parcel 27 on Schutzbury Road, RO Outlying Residence, Zoning District. Frontage and access to subject parcels of land are located between 187 and 201 Schutzbury Road. This is continued from February 22, 2024. ZBA-FY 2024-12 Brian Baker, formerly Patricia Teigen, requests for a special permit under Section 6.31 of the zoning bylaw to allow for the construction of a single-family home on a flyblock with requested waivers from building plans at 386 Shea Street, MAP 20D Parcel 78, RN Neighborhood Residence, Zoning District. This is continued from February 22, 2024. Following that, there's general public comment period on matters not before the board tonight and other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours. Before we begin consideration of our two agenda items, I want to make clear that we are not going to complete consideration of the Schutzbury Solar Special Project Permit tonight. Tonight is an opportunity for the petitioner to inform the board of modifications to the project, to permit the board to raise questions and understand the project, to hear public comment, and to consider whether to direct the staff to engage peer reviewers. There will undoubtedly be additional public hearings on this solar project, and there could be further modifications to that project, perhaps from the town boards or as a result of peer review. So I want everyone to know that this is not the last opportunity for public comment. We also have another application that has been continued from February on the agenda, and I want to make sure that we get to that application as well tonight. So my suggestion is that we spend the first hour and a half on the petitioner's presentation and questions from the board. At about 7:30, we will break for five minutes and we'll have time for public comment. I anticipate that that will be about a half hour of public comment. Then we will move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open to consider peer review, the peer review motions we have before us tonight. After we have completed these matters, we will move to special project application for, or special permit application for Shea Street. I anticipate that will be about 8:15 to 8:30. Does that work for members of the board as in terms of the schedule? Without any objection, all right? So the first matter is, are there any disclosures from members of the board? And before we go to the first order of business, Rob, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to call out a typo for the second petition. It's actually 368A Shea Street and not 386. When creating the agenda, I put in a typo there, so I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. So the address is 368A Shea Street. Thank you.
Right. I'll try to remember that. Get it right in the motions. All right. Thank you, Rob. The first order of business is a consideration of meeting minutes from March 28, 2024. I reviewed those minutes. I think they accurately reflect the meetings. Does anybody have any comments, changes, or suggestions? If not, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting of Thursday, March 28, 2024. Do I have such a motion?
Move.
Move.
It's second.
Aye.
We got, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the minutes from March 28. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Slobodar?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
I don't believe that I was on that board, so I'll abstain.
All right. And Mr. Henry?
Also abstain.
The votes are three to zero to two. Three is what's required, provides a majority and what's required for approval of the minutes. The minutes are approved. The next order of business is a public hearing on ZBA-FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Solar LLC. On this panel, Mr. White is not included. You're more than welcome to stay and listen, or you can do whatever else you have to do for the next hour and a half. But the panel is myself, Mr. Slobodar, Mr. Henry, and Mr. Meadows. So first off, there's not been a site visit conducted since the last hearing on this matter, and I want to run through the submissions that have been provided to the town and to town staff since our last meeting. So those are identified in the project, the draft project application report dated April 19. They're in red. So there's a new battery energy storage system narrative. There's a new application change log dated April 17. There's a new order of resource area delineation dated. An update is pending. We don't have that yet. There's stormwater management report updated April 17. There's a stormwater pollution prevention plan updated April 17. There is a. There are ZBA, there's updated plans and prepared by a firm named Verdant Terra dated April 17. And there's a new construction phasing narrative dated April 17, 2024. I think those are all the submissions from the applicant and the town. We do have, I have noted two public comments that are noted in the record. One is from Robert Buchcha and Jenny Kalik dated April 24 with an attachment. And another is an email from Michael Lipinski forwarded by Robert Buchcha with responses from Ms. Breschrup dated February 23. Are there any other public comments that we know of or other submissions that I have to note? Ms. Breschrup?
I'm sorry, I blanked out for a minute. Did you list the letter from me about the planning board comments from October 4 and also planning board minutes from October 4 from their October 4 meeting?
You didn't zone out. I did not do that. I thought that was part of this whole package, but that's, yes, we have a letter from you dated April 18, which has the planning board summary of the planning board meeting on this. We have, and I don't know if this is a separate piece from that, we have a Pure Sky Energy Historical Project outline. There's no date on that. We have a Department of Environmental Protection Wetlands Policy Program 17-1 Photovoltaic System Solar Array Review. The effective date of that is back in 2017, but I think that's a state of policy. There's also a white paper from the Amherst Water Supply Protection Committee, which was approved. That statement was approved, a white paper was approved on 10th, 2022. Those are the ones I, the submissions I have that accompanied the planning board documents that you sent me.
Did you mention the minutes of the planning board meeting of October 4, 2023?
I did not. Do I have those? I have. Oh, that's what, you have the. I see that you have said that there is a, there was a meeting on the 24th, the 4th of October. And I, I think those are not, those are not specific minutes, but it's your representation of those. I don't see that.
We did submit minutes and maybe they didn't get into the packet, so the minutes of October 4 of 2023 should be part of the record and along with the letter that I wrote summarizing that meeting. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, there's a few other documents that were submitted after that project application report was created as well that I could mention to you just so they're on the record as well. These are documents that were sent to us from a butter's. So the first one is a peer review memo from a environmental specialist company called Fleetwood that was submitted from, in a butter. We also have a draft ANRAD that was submitted by in a butter as well. Draft order, I'm sorry, ORAD findings that were submitted as well. And then we have a document submitted from Jenny Kalik on April 24, 2024, which is emails that were requested through Republic Records requests. The ones that we have involve peer review discussions for this project between myself, Ms. Breschrup, and Aaron Jack, our conservation, sorry, wetlands specialist. So those are the documents that were afforded to us from butters to include in the packet. And I know it's a lot of documents that we have, but that's all we. To my knowledge, that's all that we've received prior to this meeting. Thank you.
All right.
Could we make, could we make sure that all of those documents are in the website? Because they are not, and open up the comments and put the comments into the comments section, please?
Definitely do that.
We should have those available. And then we, and let's also do, Rob, let's have that in the next. Those that you mentioned that we are now putting in the online form that Craig had mentioned. Have that sent in the next packet that when we have another hearing on this matter, so that we have copies of them in the next board pack. Cool. All right. Good. Are there any other submissions that we should make note of?
Nope.
All right. So now we move to the public hearing on that matter, and who's representing the petitioner?
So in attendance, we have Corey McCandless from Pure Sky, and then we have Tom Reedy, who is the attorney for Pure Sky. So let me go ahead and promote them to panelists. Right. They should be joining us shortly. Also, Mr. Chair, I want to make note that in attendance right now, we have 26 members of the public.
All right. We've got panelists. So Mr. Reedy or Ms. Corey, what's your last name?
It's pronounced McCandless. It's a bit of a mouthful.
All I see is a name.
Oh, sorry.
Give an address for the record.
Corey McCandless. My address is 1460 Farnham Point Road in Colorado Springs, Colorado, recently moved from Maine. And yes, I can send my contact information. Rob has it, so if he needs to share it with the with the rest of the board members, we can make that happen.
Good for the record. And Mr. Reedy?
Sure. Maybe before I start the whole thing with the address and everything, if we could get Chris, maybe Steve Loss as well. He's the engineer for the site, so I have a feeling he's going to be doing some talking this evening. That'd be great.
I will send him a panelist invite right now.
Thank you very much. And so for the record, Tom Reedy, I'm going to turn you with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, 6 Southeast Street, corner of Southeast and Northeast Street, right next to the Fort River School. I am here on behalf of ASD Schutzbury Ma Solar, who I think we're just going to call Pure Sky because it's quite a bit easier. With me, Corey McCandless from Pure Sky, and also Steve Loss, who will join us, and Chris Connolly, both from Birdenterra, and they are the site designers for this project. And I think, you know, Mr. Chairman, you did a good job with the introduction. You know, we don't expect to be closed this evening. We don't expect to be closed for, I mean, frankly, a few months. Like, there's quite a bit that needs to be done, and quite frankly, I think what we think one of the most important things is, is to get a peer reviewer. I know that we had this discussion back in October about a peer reviewer and the scope of the peer reviewer or peer reviewers, plural, and what they were going to do. And hopefully this evening, you're able to authorize the staff to contract with at least one of the peer reviewers for better energy storage in the glare, and then to issue requests and hopefully contract with another peer reviewer or peer reviewers for the balance of the information. And so, you know, tonight, we'll go over the plans. We can talk high level about some of the changes that we've been working on. I'm going to give you an update of kind of where we've been and where we expect to go. But I would hesitate to get into the nitty gritty of all of the site plans, the construction logistics plans, et cetera, until that peer reviewer really has the time to dig in. And it's without any disrespect to the board, but there's a lot of detail here. And to have an engineer who's used to seeing this, and to have professionals who are used to seeing this type of material, I think is going to help everybody. And so I think in our mind, it would be, you know, high-level discussions today. Obviously, receive all the public comment that the public, that you're okay with having the public make. And then to continue this hearing to, I think, your June 13 hearing, which I think is your first one in June, as either a check-in or potentially the peer reviewer will be done by then, which frankly, we doubt, but just as a check-in. And then maybe a real substantive meeting, starting, let's say, in July, where in July, we can start to compartmentalize the different areas that the board really wants to dive into, whether it's, you know, construction logistics, or battery energy storage, or stormwater, et cetera. And so just because it's a, it has a lot of, there's a lot of facets to this project, and we don't want to skimp on any of the details, because I think Pure Sky's done a really nice job of assembling those details, and they're only going to get better, more refined and justified through the peer review process. And there may be some comments in the peer review process that caused the plans to change. And as was mentioned, there may be some comments in the NOI process, which I'll talk about in a minute, that may cause the plan to change. So this is more of a, here's what we've been doing, here's where we are, here's where we see that we're going conversation. If at any point you want to get into the details, we're ready to get into the details. And I don't want to, I just don't know that it's going to be the most valuable expenditure of everybody's time. And so.
I, you know, I appreciate that. I think it makes sense to do a high-level review. Open that if board members have questions and details, they're free to ask those, you know, absolutely.
Okay.
And so I think, I think a good high-level review makes sense. The things that have changed in the new submissions. And I agree with you that this, there's going to be further hearings on this. I don't, I'm not quite sure on the dates. But there'll be further hearings on this, and we can get into probably subject-by-subject matter hearings in the days to come. But I want to do, want to see what the changes are. I think that's important, and I want to provide public comment.
Absolutely. Excellent. So where we've been, we've, last time we were here was in February. You know, we got some feedback. We've been working on the plans. I'll have Corey talk about the battery energy storage update, and then Steve talk about the plan update. We've also been in front of the Conservation Commission in that ANRAD abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation, ORAD, which is what's issued. Once you receive that, once they approve the ANRAD, you get the Order of Resource Area Delineation. We're just about there. So we were in front of the Conservation Commission last evening. There are what I would consider ministerial additions to the plan and literally to put on the dates that the plan had been revised and submitted to the Conservation Commission. Nothing substantive, nothing about where the wetlands are, but just really more ministerial. The commission felt it wisest to wait until that was updated. So when they approve the plan, that is included with it. So we expect that, fingers crossed, in the next two weeks at their next meeting. And so that's where the ORAD will be. I mentioned NOI, so Notice of Intent. We are going to require a Notice of Intent because we are going to be within jurisdictional areas. And so we're going to have to submit a Notice of Intent to the Conservation Commission to get approval to do work within those jurisdictional areas. So there's going to be a parallel track with the Conservation Commission along with obviously the zoning board of appeals process we're going through.
Going any further, Mr. Reedy, we just need Mr. Loss to identify himself and give his address for the record. And then he can speak when needed.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Steve Loss, 240 Hunter's Chase, Eders, Pennsylvania, 17319.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Reedy, go ahead.
Okay. And I'm almost done anyways. And that's really, that's really where we are. Concom was last night. We anticipate NOI. We already talked about what we hope to get out of this meeting as far as authorizations for the peer review, and then really let the peer reviewers dig into the substantive aspects of this project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Corey to talk about the battery energy storage, and then to Steve to talk about the updates to the plans.
Great. Thank you so much, Tom. Yes, good evening, everybody. So since we have last met with you folks back in February, we have switched our battery and energy storage provider that was Powen. We are, since then, we have made a business decision to switch to Canadian Solar. They have a sole bank energy unit that will be installed on the site. As, as you may or may not know, energy storage, you know, for any projects above 500 kilowatts, they do require, per Massachusetts state law, energy storage systems to be included in the scope of the project. So that's why we are including energy storage at this project. And in our discussions with Powen previously, they had indicated to us that they were only interested in working with solar developers for portfolio size orders of 100 megawatt hours or more. These systems are incredibly expensive. We do not have that sort of need. So we started exploring other manufacturers, and we landed on Canadian Solar. So I have since then provided Rob with several documents about the energy storage systems. I'm happy to go into detail on any of those materials with the board. And that's, that's really, and nothing else has changed since then. The pad has shrunk because it is a smaller system, so the equipment pad is a little bit smaller. So if there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Steve to talk about the changes to the site plan.
May I ask a question?
Are there any questions on the solar? Let's focus on the change of the battery storage.
I do have one, I do have one question. What is the big difference between these two companies in terms of what they offer?
Yeah, so they offer different, so every battery manufacturer has proprietary information that they include in their batteries. So the actual component of the battery is different. I cannot tell you off the top of my head the difference between Powen and Canadian Solar batteries. It is included in the spec sheets that have been provided to the board. If you'd like, I can do it, you know, I can bring our battery and energy storage specialists to the table and maybe give a more thorough presentation on the technical differences between the two. But otherwise, it's, it's essentially, I mean, it's very similar to the Powen product. They, some come with suppression systems, some models, you know, have the option to not include those. We opted to not include the fire suppression system because of the concern with those being deployed and getting into the ground. They also, sometimes they include material that, or, you know, chemicals that may get into the ground. They do have containment systems installed that are designed to contain all of that runoff. But with this one, we did not, we opted to not include it. So that's probably the biggest change.
So one of the concerns that I had was that the company prior to this one had batteries and reports of batteries with fire issues. And so that's the heart, that is the heart of my question in terms of the technical differences. So are there different safeguards, different components make up of this battery that minimizes, reduce those catching fire?
Yeah, so with fires and lithium ion batteries, the, the main reason for those fires is water contamination. With the Canadian solar products, they are designed to not have any sort of leakage or any sort of water contamination. They have a proven track record to show that that hasn't happened. And we're very confident that they're safe systems. And, you know, we're working with the fire department to make sure that they are installed properly and function correctly. They're also monitored as well. So, I mean, they're, they're a very safe system. They're similar to the, to other, you know, standalone energy storage projects that have been permitted throughout Massachusetts and have a good track record of safety. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Henry, I'd like to just follow up on your question if I could. There is, there's been reports of Powen's fires. You said that they have a good track record. Are you telling me that we're not going to, that they don't have, they have no fires? Or is it, what is a good track record in your opinion?
So I was speaking to the Canadian solar product.
Not, not Powen, speaking to the new one, what's the track record they have?
It's, I mean, in Massachusetts, I myself do not know of any issues with Canadian solar products within Massachusetts. I, that's not to say that there hasn't been in the past. But they, it's. Um, but they, it's, they're, they're very reliable and they have been on the market for a long period of time. Um, so if that's something that I can, uh, provide to the board, um, you know, before the next time we appear in front of you folks, um, I can certainly do, do so.
Mr. Henry, would you find that valuable? I would.
I, I, I would, yes.
So if you can give us a, you know, the incidents, if there are incidents of fires within the, you know, with this model or similar models, would be very valuable.
Yeah, we can certainly provide.
Incidents, I don't know if fire is the right word, but you know what, you know what we're getting at is the, um, fires or discharge or problems with that would be bad.
Any sort of incident.
Yep. And would that be, I, I, then we'll get to Mr. Loss here in a second. Would that be something that the peer review folks are looking at, either Robert or Ms. Breskup, is that something they'd be looking at, right?
Yes, they are. They're gonna be looking at the specifications. They're gonna see if it's appropriate for this project and they're gonna see, um,
Track record?
Track record and previous history of where else it was used and, and safety and all that stuff.
All right. Are there any other questions on the battery storage system before we move on to the changes in the site plan? Okay, Mr. Loss.
Okay, uh, yeah, changes to the site plan, uh, obviously, there's been some, uh, more peer review wetland work going on with, uh, Goddard and the Concom. We've imported those revised boundaries, um, and a couple of small additional internal wetlands into our site plan. We've revised our, uh, stormwater and erosion control measures accordingly. Moved all the panels out of any buffer zones for any of those features. And, uh, you know, we've shrunk the equipment pad as Corey just discussed. Uh, revised our stormwater according to that a- as well. And, uh, you know, just update stormwater in the NS based off of, off of those changes. Um, one, one other thing we have implemented is, uh, the screw type um, rack for screw type posts for the racking. So.
But, um, can you elaborate on that? Um, I remember that was a discussion. Is that the way in which it's affixed to the ground and is?
Yeah, yep, yep, just a, a couple, couple inch diameter post that screws into the ground for, uh, minimal, minimal disturbance or what, what could possibly be called impervious.
And are those, yeah, I was trying to understand the, the site plan um, that was contained in the, the packet we got. Is that, are those changes reflected in this April seventeenth? And did it, do you show what it was and what the changes have been made or how, how do I read that? How do I know that?
Oh, had, well, the changes are on the, on the plan. You, you can see the smaller pad.
Um, goes, the changes in green?
Um, no, no, we, we don't have the changes in, in green, the, the, uh, see here. So the wetlands or, you know, the areas that weren't included in the, um, Concom uh, or the ANRAD determination of the wetlands, they're in that hatch, the hatching that's shown on the outside. The green areas are the wetlands.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, um, would it be helpful if we screen share the plans so we can see?
Yes, yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Let's just screen share the plans.
Okay, if somebody from the applicant team could do that, if they're able to, that'd be really helpful, um, to, to the board.
I'm just trying to get a feel for the, the size of the changes. I know you described them as small, but I think it's probably valuable for the board just to see the extent of the changes and the degree to which the changes are made.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
So, yeah, you see this hatching, these hatched areas on the outside here. Um, they've been identified, we got this from, from Goddard. They've been identified as area not included in the ANRAD determination. Um, so you'll see those out there. All of that buffers around the perimeter that have changed or, you know, it's been ever so slight on the perimeter. Um, but the bu- the buffer areas have been adjusted according to any of those changes. There's a few internal, uh, wetlands in here. Um, and then here is your, your smaller pad area. The equipment pad is this, it's a square here. It's ninety by eighty on this, on this rendition.
So the principal changes are up in the upper right hand corner as I'm looking along that, the, the buffer of the wetland. Is that right?
Uh, there were some changes on this, this northern side. Um, there were some changes in and along here. Um, so we did actually move this turnaround down. I think this kind of bumped out up here where we originally had to turn around and we just slid that down a, a little bit to the south. So that is, would us, would stay outside of, of any buffer disturbance.
And Steve, um, Steve made that change in response to the fire department transmittal comment. Um, they asked for a turnaround at least a hundred feet away from the equipment pad. So we were able to incorporate that, um, request for the change.
Great. Mr. Meadows, I see your hands up and then Ms. Breskup.
Uh, I, I'm curious, I, if I recall correctly, you originally had a, uh, tracking system? And now it appears as though it's a stationary system? Can you tell me what, what, why you made that change? And what the, uh, if I'm correct? And, and what the sizing is now of the entire system?
Um, the, the system is still a tracker system. So we have not, we have not moved to fixed tilt. Um, the size, I guess, at this point, I would defer that, I think, to Pure Sky. We, we've, uh, you know, we, we've lost a few panels here, here and there. So I, I don't know the exact output at this point. If that's just, is that the sizing, the, the megawatt output you're looking for or the number, or number of panels?
The megawatt output.
Yeah.
Yes, Steve, let me, let me check the nameplate reading on the, on the title block. One moment, please.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it was listed in, um, one of the documents that was received by the board, Mr. Chair. I think it was in the, the battery storage system narrative. I think it went down to like nine point three seven megawatts or something like that.
Oh, I have a nine point two six seven megawatts?
That sounds about right.
That's the correct number?
That's, yeah, that would be the DC size. Yeah.
And four point, no, and four point four DC? Is that correct?
Yes, that, that also sounds correct. Yeah.
All right, so that's.
And the, and the battery storage system is what size?
It was, um, it was, uh, four hours. I believe it's dropped down to two hours, two megawatt hours. So let me also just confirm that for you folks as well.
Yeah, that's what I read here.
I believe that was also brought up at previous meeting, Mr. Chair, back in January. Um, I think they talked about cutting back because the, I guess the system didn't need the original four megawatt hours. I'm just, this is just me recollecting information that was discussed at previous meetings. Of course, the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's to my knowledge what I remember.
Yeah, we did downsize it because, um, we, we didn't need to export, um, that much power to the grid. We're using the battery. Um, so I, I just, I, I wanna give you guys the right numbers those. And they have changed since we, um, we did drop the panel count. So, um, while I'm looking for that, I'm happy to answer other questions.
Let's, um, while you look for that, let's go to Ms. Breskup. She has her hand up.
Oh, I just noticed one other thing and I think Erin Jacques brought it up when she was talking to me and Mr. Wachilla. And that is that the, um, the roadway, the access road has changed, um, its course. Not the gravel road, but the road that is, I guess it's hard packed earth. So that, um, the route of that road has changed since you submitted something to us earlier in this project. That's all. I don't have a question about it. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was as a, a, a reaction to the two new, uh, wetlands that were, uh, popped up through the continual process. Uh, so we had to move that through, uh, to try and offset those two wetlands the best, best way possible to, just to have a pathway through there to, to construct the project.
Yeah, well, just to elaborate on what Steve was saying, um, the wetland in front of you, the, um, five S dash one oh six, um, that five S wetland, Steve, if you don't mind, um, putting your cursor over on top of that one. Yeah, so that was, and Tom, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a state regulated wetland. Um, those are, we, we really didn't want to encroach on that at all. So we decided to move, um, it, it, because as you'll previously recall, the access road was wrapping around the buffer zone for that and then connecting to the turnaround. Um, just past the equipment pad. So we, we decided to move, shift that to the west, um, to kind of straddle the two buffer zones of those two new wetlands in the center of the, of the array, of the array. Um, and it is forty feet from, um, the, from the actual wetland to the edge of the road. And it's really an, you know, an earthen packed, uh, access road. So we just really didn't wanna encroach on that state regulated wetland. And we, we thought, you know, this would be the widest path where it would do, you know, the most minimal amount of impact, um, just on the buffer for those two, um, Amherst regulated wetlands.
Anything else, Ms. Breskup? Put your hands up, just. All right. Mr. Loss, so you were, you were, is that pretty much what you were, wish to present or you have more to tell us about the changes?
Yeah, no, I, that, that's pretty good overview of what, uh, what has changed here. I, I'll take questions, but I don't, yeah, I don't really have anything else more to, to offer till we, you know, we look forward to going through the peer review process and, and, uh, you know, getting into the details at that point.
All right. Mr. Reidy, do you have anything else to present?
No, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Members of the board have questions. It seems a lot of this for us, who, the peer review will have, um, will identify issues and questions more. And there may be further changes. So, I mean, are any questions right now or this sort of top line questions? Um, and if there are none, there are no further top line questions, we can move on to a public comment if that's what, um, unless there are other board members' questions.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Whoops, somehow I just lost, I lost my screen for a second. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes, we can.
Oh, well, there we go. Now I'm, I'm back for whatever reason. That's good. That, that was, yeah, which is gone for a bit. Um, it's probably I needed battery storage to keep that from happening. All right, um, if there are no other comments from board members, this is an opportunity for public comment. Mr. Wachilla, I note that we have, what do you, since, we have twenty-four people
Yes.
In attendance?
That's correct, twenty-four.
Twenty-four people in attendance. Um, so, uh, we got a large number of people here. Um, if you wish to speak, please so indicate by using the raised hand function on your Zoom application or pressing star nine on your phone. The chair with the assistance of the staff will recognize people who wish to speak. When recognized, please state your name and address for the record. All comments should be addressed to the board. Please limit your comments to about three minutes. The chair will start a timer to assist you in keeping that time, keeping to that time limit. If your comment is similar to a previous comment, please consider just stating your name and address and state that your position is similar to a prior commenter. By doing so, the board will be cognizant of the fact that there are several people who hold a similar position and has the same effect as repeating the earlier stated position. So we will note that. We'll know that you share a position with somebody else. And that the added benefit of giving more people a chance to speak on this matter. As I stated before, the board is gonna hold a lot of public hearings in this, or several public hearings on this matter. And we'll be taking co- public comment at all public hearings. So I guess what I'd like to do is start off going through with the, you identify the, the person who first raised their hand, Rob. And when you do, please give your name, when you're recognized, please give your name and address, uh, for the record and make your comments to the board.
So, Mr. Chair, it looks like the first person to raise their hand, um, Fleetwood Environmental Solutions, that was the company I referenced, um, the report sent to us earlier. So they should be able to unmute themselves and speak to the board.
Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my name's David Cameron. I'm with Fleetwood Environmental Solutions LLC, eighty-four Russell Street in Hadley. And I'm attending this meeting on behalf of Jenny Calick and Robert Brazucca, who are downgrading abutters to the project. I believe that the board was provided with a pure or a third party review report that I submitted to the Conservation Commission several weeks ago. And, um, I went into a lot of detail about projects like this in that letter. Um, I would open up by, um, adding on to Attorney Reidy's comments. Attorney Reidy was talking about the, the ANRAD and ORAD process. And I don't know how familiar the board is with how that works, but that is kind of the preliminary planning phase for a project like this. It's establishing the wetland boundaries, the legal wetland boundaries, just so that everybody agrees on where those boundaries are. And the next step, if any work is proposed within, um, the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, whether it's under the Wetlands Protection Act or the Town of Amherst Wetlands bylaw, that's a notice of intent process. So that, that will still have to play out. Um, in that report that I submitted to the commission several weeks ago, I noted that constructing projects like this, on landforms like this can be very challenging. They're not insurmountable, but they have inherent challenges when you're clearing forested hillsides, significant acreage. Management of stormwater during the construction phase is absolutely critical. Um, and, um, unfortunately, I, I have a lot of experience with this because I've been in enforcement. I've, I've worked on projects like this in an enforcement capacity and arguably have more experience dealing with water quality violations associated with projects like this than perhaps anybody else in the Commonwealth. So I know how these projects can go off the rails if they're not designed and more importantly, constructed properly. So, um, getting a, a very competent peer review civil and environmental engineer with demonstrated stormwater design experience and specifically experience dealing with these types of projects in a remedial fashion is probably very important for the board to consider. Um, I do note that, according to the latest plans, it looks like the applicant has pulled almost everything out of the one hundred foot buffer zone, uh, for the project. And I, I have to say, I really commend the project proponent for doing that. That's, um, uh, that's very admirable and it's a, it's a great. that's very admirable and it's, it's a great show of good faith on behalf of the project opponent. That means they took, they've taken our comments very seriously and they, they, they seem to understand what the inherent risks are in a project like this, so I commend them for that. My clients have encouraged me to offer my technical experience to the board since I've dealt with a lot of projects like this, and so I would offer that up if at any point the board wants to contact me directly to get input on how these projects tend to go, you can feel free to do that. And I think that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Who's the next person we have? Mr. Wachilla?
And forgive me if I mispronounce your last name, Eric Bakrak.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, comments are a lot clearer.
Thank you so much. I just want to point out first that
Before you start, just give us your address, Mr. Bakrak.
It's Eric Bakrak, two seven seven Chutesbury Road at Amherst. And I want you to first mention that I did send a letter to be included and asked to be included in the members of the ZBA's packets on April nineteenth and received a letter back from Ms. Brestrop indicating that the, she will have included in the ZBA pack and I did not, and I'm concerned because I did not hear that it was included because it did come from myself regarding this project. I just want, let me read the statement that I've, I've written for, to, just to be concise here. If permitted by the ZBA, the Chutesbury Road solar project will be the single largest project of its kind and likely the only project ever of this magnitude to be seen in Amherst. This is a huge and environmentally very challenging project and is being undertaken by a company that has been sloppy throughout the application process and throughout the nearly five years it has been active. Just look to, just look at the voluminous project application. And if you follow it through, you will see countless redlined areas, crossed out dates, more crossed out passages, references to the AMP energy in many places. That is to say that if Pure Sky can't submit a clean and coherent application, what will the project look like? This project, project has enormous and irreparable environmental damage implications. By clear cutting forty two acres of forest land, we have eliminated any potential natural water absorption provided by the forest and soil. What likelihood is there of water runoff control after forty two acres, thirty one football fields worth have been stripped to the ground? The project is on a topographically downward sloping terrain. What will happen to the Adams Brook, the Fort River watershed and Amherst public and private drinking water supplies? We just don't know. In twenty nineteen, Dr. Raymond Bradley of UMass's Northeast Climate Science Center said, quote, that our storms have more energy and frequency and this will only increase. Much of the precipitation will be in the, in winter and early spring. Groundwater is at the surface, which means additional water from storms will be more likely to flood downstream, given the high water table. The ZBA is taking on a project the likes of which has never been seen before in Amherst. But we can point to other similar projects elsewhere that have had disastrous outcomes. I'm asking the ZBA to study this project carefully, employ objective, non biased peer reviewers and experts in the field to test the veracity of Pure Sky's application assumptions and to please, please look at this project from a three hundred sixty degree perspective and require comprehensive environmental impact studies and examine thoroughly the inherent risks of the project. It will be too late for future regrets after the damage is done and the forests and wetlands are destroyed. Please take the time that a project of this magnitude demands before permitting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bakrak.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we'll, I'm, I'm sure that your comment will be, we've asked that your comment will be included in the next.
Actually, Mr. Chair was included in your packet. I forgot to mention that to you, but there was a letter from April nineteenth, twenty twenty four, sent from Eric Bakrak. So it might have been missed when you were announcing it earlier on, but it is in the digital packet that the board has access to.
Yep.
So the next public comment is going to be from Judy Eisman of the Pelham Planning Board.
Yes, hello, this is Judith Eisman. I live at eighty eight Arnold Road in Pelham. And I'm offering these comments on behalf of the Pelham Planning Board and others in Pelham who are strongly opposed to this project. I will email lengthier comments following this hearing as I did in December twenty twenty three, when I afforded information about current science and reports from private, public and governmental studies. You did not mention that those public comments, but I will resend them if you have misplaced or don't have them. Sadly, I have firsthand knowledge of the dangers of a poorly designed and monitored solar project. My son and his wife were the victims of a poor stormwater management plan in Williamsburg on their property adjacent to the Mill River and Devil's Den. Several tons of earth washed down onto about ten acres of their property and damaged forests, wetlands, the river ecosystem and their peace of mind for several years, while a variety of attempts to restore the area made some things even worse. Ultimately, after those responsible failed to comply with assorted violations, reparations and a D E P enforcement order, a federal court consent decree filed by then Attorney General Maura Healey was settled for one point fourteen million dollars. The latest scientific studies and evidence scream for denial of a project of this magnitude in an area zone outlying residential and which includes a large area of wetland forests of high quality, vital to the interests of Amherst, Pelham and Chutesbury, as well as the region. Certainly industrial scale solar has a place as we face a long delayed response to climate change. However, that does not mean that solar or other energy production types should be located where they will in fact do damage. Clinging to outdated assumptions, scientific findings and opinions is no help here. Not only is this area inappropriate for such an industrial use, but the main question actually is whether the cutting of trees for industrial solar panels is in furtherance of state policy. Clearly, it is not. The changes in the DOE R SMART, that's Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target Program, and their guidelines of SMART, make it clear that, make that clear, that's cutting trees, that's not a good idea. And Climate Chief Melissa Hoffer often repeats, a state makes a statement to the effect that net zero equals increases in electricity infrastructure plus more carbon sequestration. Cutting down trees does not further carbon sequestration. Further, nature based solutions are being promoted by the state's municipal vulnerability program. And remember that solar panels are fossil fuel based with all the attendant problems having to do with eventual pollution and, and other kinds of replacement needs that require again fossil fuels. Building solar is a stopgap, not a solution to climate change. And surely, surely someone can locate a better site. Amherst has already permitted large solar project elsewhere, and this one is a disaster in the making. Why would the Amherst zoning board of appeals go along with something that neither benefits the town nor the state's well being and may in fact cause irreversible damage to soils, water and the area's capacity to sequester carbon, to sequester carbon, I'm sorry, while damaging wildlife cores and habitat in Amherst, Pelham and Chutesbury? To the extent that the town of Amherst thinks it must do its part to assist with combating climate change and cleaner energy use, I implore you to approve another project, not this one. Don't be fooled by questionable science or ignore the motivations involved.
Ms. Eisman, could you kind of wrap up? You're at four minutes.
One more sentence. Two, too often environmental costs are not adequately described in the rush to get things built. We are running out of environmental resources to balance against housing needs, various desires and corporate greed. Nature is not just an amenity separate from humanity and it's time we take that fact seriously.
Thank you.
All right. So next we have Michael Lipinski.
Hi, I'm Mike Lipinski, one six seven Chutesbury Road in Amherst. But before I begin my public comments, I just want to mention that there was a serious omission on that map that was shown earlier. It does not show a newly identified wetland at the entrance to the project with a one hundred foot buffer around it. I don't know if they dropped that off the map on purpose or if it's an accident, but that is part of the new Anrad map. And they didn't even show the entrance on the screen. And I think that's a serious omission that I'd like someone to address before I begin my comments.
Ms. Lipinski, will, those things can be addressed after the comment period?
Okay, that would be just as good, just as well, just make a note of it. Because it was, it was pretty blatant.
It's, that's the option of the presenter if they want to address.
Okay, thank you.
Proceed.
Okay, so last October, members of the planning board asked Pure Sky to provide them with examples of previously completed solar projects that were similar to the proposed Chutesbury Road facility. They did not do that. On April seventeenth, Corey from Pure Sky submitted a document to the ZBA titled Pure Sky Energy Historical Project Outline. This document features a single example from a fairly recent solar project on one seventy nine Adams Road in East Brookfield, Massachusetts. Unfortunately, it is not at all comparable to the Chutesbury Road site under consideration. It's not clear if Pure Sky really believes that the Adams Road site is comparable or more likely, just hoping that no one on the ZBA panel will question their example. Why are these two sites not compatible? Well, let's start with Chutesbury Road. Forty one acres of disturbance. That's forty one acres of trees brought to the ground, grubbed, you know the routine by now. The Adams Road site, twenty one acres of disturbance, half the size. The Chutesbury Road site, one hundred percent forest. The Adams Road site, approximately fifty percent of that site was open fields. The other fifty percent was trees. Chutesbury Road has over a dozen well cared for homes directly abutting the project. There's people who live there and take pride in their homes and their natural setting. Many of these homes still house the original occupants. So in many ways, it's a mature neighborhood, but over the years, we've had some new families arrive, many of them with children. Adams Road. Pure Sky laughably said that the neighbors do not seem to have any complaints about the project. Well, I took a field trip there. And here's what I saw. Let me paint a picture for you. Across the street from this project is a beautiful old white farmhouse with a perfectly formed old maple tree in front of it. Next to that house is a large red and white sign saying, coming soon. American Industries Aggregate Asphalt Excavation. The entire side of the, of the site on the other side of the road is going to become an aggregate asphalt excavation site. The people who lived in that house are long gone. The, the site right now is already under construction. It's basically just driveways and equipment and the kind of things you'd expect to see on a fledgling excavation site. Down the road, on the same side as the actual solar plant, downstream from the solar plant is an area littered with construction equipment. It's an excavation site, sand and gravel contains the sorting equipment for sorting sand and gravel from, for an operation. You know what those big slides are and you know the type of machines that are there, the type of noise and dust that that produces. And to even top it off, just down from that is a cement plant. Those are the neighbors to this particular facility.
Mr. Lipinski, you're running up on four minutes. Can you wrap it up?
I'm, I'm not even close to done. I'd like about two more minutes.
No, we, everybody's
In other words, it's a
Everybody's about, about three minutes, you're at four minutes and twenty seconds, so kind of wrap it up, give us your main points. There'll be other opportunities to
My main point is the comparison that they're making is not true. It's not even close to true, and yet they're trying to slide it in as a true statement. Here's my closing, so I don't lose that. I would urge you to require Pure Sky to reveal the problems and complaints generated by their facilities in other towns that they did not choose for comparison, especially issues that occurred during construction. The lesson to be learned here is the ZBA needs to take the time to do a slow, deliberate examination of every document and every aspect of this project. Something that has definitely not happened to date. This is a complex project being proposed for an environmentally sensitive, inappropriate location. Please treat it as
Thank you, Mr. Lipinski.
So
Who's our next person?
So next person is Lenore Brick.
Hi, everybody. This will be under three minutes.
All right, just start with your, then start with your name and address, please.
Yes, Lenore Brick, Strong Street, Amherst, and thank you all for your good thorough work. Without any disrespect to everyone involved that's just trying to do their jobs well, my comments are viewing the vision and purpose for this project through a big picture lens and challenging the fundamental wisdom of these kinds of solar projects. Unfortunately, there's not been enough understanding about how natural systems have always regulated the climate and how intact ecosystems like forests are critical to mitigate the disastrous effect, disastrous effects of our current climate catastrophe. Even though the current Healy administration has outlined climate goals that that highlight restoring soil health and protecting greenlands like forests, restoring soil health. I'm sorry, there, there still remains archaic legislation and regulatory processes, a lack of an integrated regional approach, short sighted policies and subsidy programs that have been funding projects like this across the state, an inefficient lack of oversight, all of that, so that we're crippled with fragmented governance, leaving our local town boards and committees, you guys, to have the foresight, courage and clarity to do the right thing for our public, personal and planetary health. As you know, because some things legal doesn't make it's right, because some things right in theory or in certain places doesn't make it right in practice or in every place. There's a wealth of current resources, if you need more, that we at Climate Action Now can offer you, including academic papers, lectures, articles, websites that clearly make the case that installing large industrial solar plants on any land that we need to protect water quality and supply, soil integrity, biodiversity, to help prevent impacts of the flooding, droughts, increasing heat, that's all only getting worse, as we all know, is the wrong course of action to address the mess that we find ourselves in. Basically because of our disconnect with nature and our colonial traditional economies based on resource extraction. We urge you to please do everything in your power and in your conscience to make the right decisions. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you, Ms. Brick. Mr. Wachilla, who's next?
So we have a Scott Cashin.
Thank you. Scott Cashin, I live at twenty one Hopbrook Road in Amherst. And I'm a biologist with seventeen years of professional experience evaluating the environmental impacts of industrial scale solar projects. At the Conservation Commission meeting, a member of the public commented that small world pagonia occurs at the project site. This plant species is not only federally listed as endangered and state listed as threatened, but it is one of the rarest plants in the entire northeast ecoregion. To the best of my knowledge, there haven't been any surveys to document the presence of rare plant and animal species at the project site. Without survey data, it is impossible for the public and ZBA to understand the true environmental impacts of the project. And as important and as importantly, to formulate mitigation to minimize the project's impacts on the natural environment. Plant surveys need to be conducted at the project site. The surveys should occur throughout the blooming period and they should be floristic in nature, meaning every species is identified to the level necessary to determine rarity. In addition, the plant surveys should be conducted by an independent third party botanist, or if conducted by the applicant's consultants. The survey methods and results should be peer reviewed. A couple of comments with respect to wildlife. The site plans show quote unquote amphibian enhancements around wetlands that would insert, would be encircled by project infrastructure. What amphibian species would these enhancements benefit? Based on the applicant's natural resources inventory, there have not been any efforts to inventory the full suite of amphibians or other wildlife taxa at the project site. While amphibian enhancements might seem like a good idea, they could have negative impacts depending on the species that occur at the site. Surveys to document the amphibians and other wildlife taxa that occur at the project site need to be conducted. The applicant's natural resources inventory identifies the possibility that the federally and state listed long eared bat could occur at the project site. However, there haven't been any surveys to determine if this species does indeed occur at the project site. Bat surveys are essential to understanding the project's impacts and in formulating appropriate mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cashin.
So next, so next we have Phil Rich.
Okay, Phil Rich, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Phil Rich, one eighty seven Chutesbury Road, Amherst. I'm the person right, right next to the access road. The access road comes in at my mailbox. So just to be really clear, and, and a number of neighbors already spoken. I'm the neighbor most neighborly, however. I'm concerned already about flooding here. My basement flooded just a year ago because of that downhill run. That's just the normal run. See, I've talked to the town for years about what gets washed down the road that comes across my driveway and has eroded the driveway and eroded the, the, and this is just the existing. Fifty feet from my house, excuse me, fifty yards from my house. We're going to have years and years of, of drive, of, of path rather torn up. So I'm, I'm concerned about, and I want to be clear, and I think this is true for all of the neighbors. We've mentioned already kind of the downhill geology here, excuse me, geography here. But I, I'm one of those people right in line. So I have concerns as a, as a, as a, a citizen of the town about property values, about noise pollution, about flooding, about drainage, about erosion, all of these things, at least in terms of erosion and flooding, already the case for me. So I think that's one thing that I want to be really clear on as a direct abuser. Secondly, I would be very concerned with respect to who the peer reviewer is going to be selected by and, and who gets to put that, that those names on the list. I would formally request that it has nothing to do with, and in fact, isn't even revealed to the applicant team or anybody related to the applicant team, so that it really is truly an independent reviewer. I doubt there's that many reviewers in the state, so I imagine that, that they're not, they're not that far removed. But I would be very concerned about that because the whole point here is to ensure that commercial interests for a commercial property aren't really rationalized by all the things that we're hearing in light of all the other things that we're hearing about the potentially irreversible damage. I think that's all I really want to say, just speaking directly, I guess, from my own personal experience and my own heart about this. So thank you very much, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rich.
So we have a few more hands up, Mr. Chair. So the next person we have is Jenny Kalik.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your work tonight. I want to touch on.
Just give us your name and address, Ms. Kalik, before we.
Allen, one four seven Chutesbury Road in Amherst. Thank you. I wanted to touch upon the, in your packet, there's material from the planning board. As Ms. Bestrop commented, we've got the minutes, we've got a summary memo, we've got materials that were requested by the planning board. When the planning board met on October sixth, they didn't have peer reviewers, but they had several hours of very sincere questions that they posed. Many of them were not answered to the degree that the planning board said, we can't say to the ZBA, we recommend this project. Quite the contrary, we may want to see it again. We, we have many questions. It is so complicated. We would like to be kept apprised of it. And after our October sixth meeting, we wanted immediately our minutes, the summary board and all the materials transferred and in the hands of the ZBA as they started to think about this project. This material is in your packet today because as I looked for those materials, I discovered none of them had been generated. I asked Chris to please do the minutes. The minutes were done six months after the meeting. I asked for the memo. It was done six months after the meeting and none of you had the opportunity to hear the in-depth presentation and discussion of your fellow companion board with a great deal of insight and many, many questions. All that material is now in your board. So the, in your packet, now we have a problem, don't we? The procedures are upside down here. We're, we're at the end of April. There's no ORAD yet. And yet, the applicant is saying, just sit back and wait till the peer reviewer tells you what to think about. Whereas the planning board said, here are many, many important questions. We pass them to you and let's be in communication as we go forward. So I think we have a major flaw in the beginning of how this project came to you, what you've had available to you to think about and to study. Just as an example, a couple of the comments tonight, Mr. Cashin talked about concern about species. All of that was brought up at the planning board. Mr. Lipinski talked about this example that was brought up actually in the planning board. Phasing, which you all talked about back in October. If you look at the, the phasing document, it, there are some changes, but it starts out with cutting down all the trees all at once in what's called pre-construction. That was a worry to the planning board. It was worried to the Concom. It's in the minutes that you got and the document you got from Aaron Jacques. And yet we're sitting here and kind of being led by the applicant to think that what's going to happen is hurry up and get a peer reviewer. Regarding Mr. Rich's comment, the peer reviewer for the, who has already been hired is the firm WSP. Through a public records search, I have seen the documents. Mr. Reedy all has worked with WSP through Blue Wave. Chris has already told us that WSP worked on Sunderland Road, which also Mr. Reedy worked on. There is the appearance of a conflict of interest. WSP does not seem appropriate for an application that is led by Attorney Reedy. And it, they have already been selected for one part of it.
Ms. Kalik, we're at four minutes here, so.
Thank you. Let's, let's write the, the process. Let's make sure that we look at things in an orderly fashion. Let's not have the applicant lead us through this very, very important process of knowing what's at stake. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kalik. Mr. Wachilla, who's next? We've got two more, I see.
Yes, Mr. Chair, can I offer my comment in response to, to Ms. Kalik's point after our last two comments?
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll do that after public comment.
Okay, thank you. So the next person we have is Renee Moss.
Hi, good evening. My name is Renee Moss and I live at two seven seven Chutesbury Road. I, before I even start, I have a question for you. I see, and maybe it's my screen, I see only two people from the ZBA on my screen. I only see Steve Judge and Craig Meadows. Is every, is, is, oh, okay. And is Everel Henry there too? I was just wondering if we still had the courtroom.
You, you got everybody here.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's just that, for some reason, I, that's all I saw. Okay, um, yes, you know, when Mr. Judge start, started the meeting and talked about the charge of the ZBA, he talked about promoting the health, safety and welfare of residents, and I think that's why we're all here tonight. I want to just say and not repeat what's been said before that, that I agree, you know, wholeheartedly, passionately with everything that has been said so far, and I, I hope you're hearing our public comments loud and clear. This is, this is a group of abutters and a group of people other than abutters in the community who have all been doing so much research, spending so much time studying this and, you know, wanting to, to protect the health, safety and welfare of the people of Amherst. One of the things that has come up for me in seeing the new plan is that we, we are looking at a delineation for the forty acres, the thirty one football field worth of forest that is being taken down. But this is a hundred and two acre parcel. And I'm concerned that when we create a project that is so, that has such magnitude, what happens to those other sixty acres? What happens to the, and if we, if we haven't, if we haven't delineated them, do we know if there are wetlands just beyond that border? And what happens with the stormwater plan? How does it affect, how does it affect that sixty acres that we haven't even looked at, that we don't even know what's there? We don't know what the endangered species is there. We don't know what the, what the wetland situation is there. So that concerns me that, that those other sixty acres are unknown and how, how it will be affected by a, a project of this magnitude. I think I just want to urge you, as everybody else has, has before me, please proceed, proceed slowly, carefully, get the right peer reviewers. Please don't do something that creates irreparable damage. And basically, that's all I have to say, and I want to thank you for your work, and I'm sure this is a very difficult project for the ZBA. I appreciate that, and I appreciate you taking your time and doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Our last public commenter is Stacy, I think, Rob.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Stacy McCullough. I live at twenty six North Valley in Pelham. I'm also a member of the Pelham Planning Board. I am in substantial agreement with many of the commenters who have expressed concerns about the potential damage from this project. When you consider the many acres of trees that are going to be cut, the desiccation of the soil, the eliminating of the habitats, the endangering of the groundwater and potentially the water supply. I think to weigh against that, you have to say, okay, that's all related to health, safety and wellbeing, but so is climate change, and we certainly do need to transition to solar. And so the question becomes, can we do that? Can we meet our energy goals? And those are also about health, safety and wellbeing, without causing the kinds of damage that this project inevitably will cause. And our region has been really at the forefront of pushing for those energy goals. We need to be net zero. It was going to be twenty fifty. We pushed to do it by twenty forty five, and now that's the goal. Our senators and representatives have been aligned about that, and they are similarly aligned. Now that they have done studies, that doing that does not require sites like this one. They've commissioned studies. There have been studies at the state level by Harvard Forest, by Audubon. The experts in these areas have treated it as an open question, saying, can we meet our climate goals, our ambitious climate goals, can we get to net zero by twenty forty five without clear cutting forests for solar? The answer is resounding yes. If you look at those reports, there is absolutely no need to cut down sensitive areas, which right now are first on the chopping block. If you make them last on the chopping block, we still have plenty of places that solar can be installed, and that's in the reports that I really would encourage you to track down because those reports are currently shifting state policy and subsidies. And the faster that the applicant tries to push, the more you need to be aware that part of the reason is that they're going to be no longer subsidized in the same way for places as biodiverse and as sensitive of this one. So please consider the direction that policy will be going and the reports that it's based on that came out of places like Audubon and Harvard Forestry, along with the state itself. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wachilla, I think that's all we have for public comment. Does anyone have their hands up?
You're correct, Mr. Chair.
We're looking at seven thirty one. So what I'd like to do is two things before we take a short five minute break. I want to give the applicant the, the chance to rebut or to respond to any comments, and I know you have a comment you want to make regarding one of the comments, which may be more appropriate to make during the public meeting on, on, on the peer reviewers. So let's go to the, have the applicant respond if they so choose to any of the, the public comments.
Sure, Mr. Chair, thanks. I mean, I think we can let the process play out and respond in time. We agree with selecting the right peer reviewer. We agree with taking it slow and meticulous. Like, that's what we're here for. Maybe one comment to, I think it was Mr. Lipinski, with what I would characterize as maybe suggesting we were being deceptive and not including a certain wetland on our plan. We're gonna, we have to go through an NOI. I think he's referencing an off-site resource area at the entrance. It's not part of our ORAD because it can't be part of our ORAD because it's not on our site. And so that there is, from my, my understanding, the Conservation Commission, through a request for the termination of applicability, found a resource area southerly of the access drive, and so we will have to go through a notice of intent process for work proximate to that resource area. So absolutely nothing deceptive here. That's part of what we're going to be going through in the process.
One last thing before we go to break. Are there members of the board who have additional questions of the applicant? All right, if not, it's seven thirty three. We'll take a five minute break and come back at seven thirty eight. And at that point, we will go to the, into a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open for the discussion of the peer review. All right, see you all in five minutes at seven thirty eight. Great, we're back at seven thirty nine. At this point, we've done, we've had the presentation, we've had public comment, we've had the ability for the, the petitioner to respond to the public comment and for board members to ask any final questions. I would now entertain a motion to move to a public meeting on this matter while keeping the public hearing open. Do I have?
So moved.
Is there a second? Move consecutive, any discussion? My intent is to deal with peer review, some motions to deal with peer review. If there's no, no further discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slobodar?
Aye.
Vote is four to nothing. We're in a public meeting. Public meeting is where the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. Tonight, we have two motions before us that we really deal with peer review. The first is, and I think if we wish to do peer review, what we really need to do is to authorize the staff, number one, to issue an RFP regarding those subject matters, which we have identified in a previous meeting. We wanted to have peer review on, and then to also authorize the staff to, once, to. And then to also authorize the staff to, once, to evaluate those RFPs and to engage in a contract with the peer review of their choice. Um, as, as through the rules, after the rules of the ZBA. So, um, I think probably it'd be valuable if either Ms. Brestrop or Mr. Wachilla would just give us a brief background on the, the process you use for doing an RFP and how you select a, a peer reviewer. And I guess, and also real briefly, the top, how the topics were chosen. And I think that's because we chose those topics at the last board meeting. But that was a while ago and people may forget. So, Ms. Brestrop, do you want to take that?
I think it would be appropriate if Mr. Wachilla, um, took that. And I will add things if I think they needed to be added, okay?
That would be great.
Sure, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically how we do peer review is that, um, we would draft what's called a request for proposals. And basically that is a document that outlines the tasks that we require from the peer reviewer. Um, so for the first round that we submitted, it was for the topics of, um, solar glare study and battery storage energy systems. Um, and, you know, we did advertise that as such, uh, the zoning board did authorize staff to start the peer review process, which means that, you know, you allowed for us to go ahead and start drafting these RFPs to solicit proposals from potential peer reviewers, which is what we did. And we did this back in January. Um, so we let that process stay open for about three to four weeks. Um, usually that gives people enough time to see our solicitation. They'll draft a proposal and then they'll send something back to us. And usually what they send back to us is, uh, you know, a, a background of what they're going to do. They'll give experience of what they did professionally, um, past experience in other towns, previous projects, et cetera. And then usually they'll include staff who are going to work on those projects and their relevant experience and qualifications, et cetera. So when we did get responses back, we only got responses back from one firm, WSP. And, uh, as Ms. Kalek mentioned, they did work on a different project for battery storage back in July of last year for a company known as Blue Wave. Um, so along with that proposal, all consultants are also required to submit a conflict of interest statement, which means that they can prove or they state to us directly that they have no direct conflict of interest with the applicants. So at this point, WSP does not have a direct conflict of interest with Pure Sky because they historically have not worked on any recent projects together. And to my knowledge, no projects within the past five to 10 years at all. So that is why, and since they were the only person that responded to the RFP, we went ahead and, and signed a contract with them. So that was the error of staff because the zoning board is actually the authority that chooses the peer reviewer. So that's one of the reasons why the first motion has come to you as the board. And mind you, we have paused any work with them. So we have not done anything since February. I mean, the only thing we did was just meet with them one time to go over the project and that's it. Um, so that first vote is going to authorize us staff to go ahead and to work with, um, WSP on the ba- battery storage and the glare study aspect of the peer review. The other thing that has to be done is you as a board have to decide if you want us as staff to go ahead and start the second round, which includes the topics of construction, um, phasing, the site plans and water quality. And we're going to group all those together into one big peer review and then do the same thing over again and hope that we get solicitations back for that. So I do see two hands up for Mr. Henry and Mr. Meadows. I don't know if you had questions about what I said specifically.
Yeah, I do, just, just, just one. Did you say there was only one company that bid for this first peer review?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and for the, for the construction part of it, do we have more than one bids?
So we haven't actually, um, so we did, back in late January, submit an RFP for the second peer review that I mentioned, but nobody responded to us after four weeks at all. So we're going to have to resubmit that after the board authorizes us as staff to do so. So when we submitted the first round, which is just the solar and the battery storage, one firm, that was it. When we as staff submitted the second round to see if anybody would actually get back to us, nobody applied at all. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And we're hoping that since it's going to be around April and May, firms may have more time for these types of peer reviews. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Right, and my other question is to prevent delays in, in what we're voting for now.
Yes.
Could we vote to say that we will defer to you guys when you get their bids back to just choose the best option?
That's, that would be the motion, yes.
Okay.
Authorize the staff to contract with the, the peer review.
And also I want to add to that, um, Mr. Henry. So that's a good question. And usually staff works independently on hiring and vetting these peer review, um, consultants that submit proposals to us. We'll look for one that we think is the most qualified, one that has the least amount of conflict at all. Uh, staff, I'm sorry, consultant that we believe can do a thorough and effective job on these types of reviews. So that's, that's essentially where given the responsibility to us to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meadows?
I, I guess I've got a couple of comments. Um, you know, I, I put out a lot of RFPs. And if we only get one response, we do not take that. We go back out again. And we go directly to recommended consultants and try to encourage them to participate. So I would feel very uncomfortable if there's only one selected, uh, consultant for peer review because they, and they were selected because they were the only ones applying. Secondly, with WSP, I, I, I have full faith in Mr. Reedy and probably WSP, but, uh, uh, any seeming appearance of conflict is, is inappropriate for us to hire a company with. And while I, you know, as I say, my confidence in Mr. Reedy and probably what WSP, I don't know them at all. I, I, one, they're the only, only reply. Secondly, there's the possibility that there's an appearance of conflict. And we, we shouldn't go along with that. Secondly, we had some good comments tonight about, uh, from Mr. Cashin about including a plant survey, an amphibian survey and a bat survey. And I think those comments should be taken with a great deal of interest. And we should include those in either a, a separate peer review for those, uh, or somehow included in the overall. Although I doubt that the, you're going to get the same kind of response for someone who's looking at construction as you would getting someone who does a bat survey. Uh, so I think all of that should be taken into consideration.
Mr. Chair, can I answer Mr. Meadows' concerns and questions?
Yes.
So we did reach out to four firms before we submitted that first RFP, Craig, regarding the battery storage and the sol- solar glare study. Um, reputable firms in, in those fields. And WSP was one of those fields actually that we reached out to as well to get an idea of how much it's going to cost for a firm like that to do that type of project. We aggregate all that data and we sent out the RFP and they happened to be the only firm that replied to us. What makes us as staff comfortable in selecting them is due to their qualifications of working on the Blue Wave project, which is a much larger battery storage project. And they also proved to us that they've worked on other larger battery storage projects as well. So just from qualifications alone, us as staff, they're comfortable making the determination that they have a high level of expertise in citing and developing these types of projects. Um, I do understand the concern that only one peer reviewer submitting an RFP could be concerning. I just think in the situation for us as staff, and Chris, you can jump in here if I'm kind of going off the path a little bit. I mean, it did not make us feel uncomfortable because we, we knew they had the qualifications already. Um, and usually if one firm replies back, it could be a firm that doesn't have a lot of experience, a firm that's just trying to get their foot in the door to do these types of projects to build up their resume. So I, I get the concern where you're coming from. And to the conflict of interests, um, discussion that was brought up. So we did speak with our town attorney about this specifically. We asked them and said, Tom Reedy worked with Blue Wave and WSP was engineering firm for that company. And now he's representing Pure Sky for this project. And town council did not really express a lot of concern to us about that being a major issue to the point where we can't go forward with WSP as our peer review consultants. He said the most important connection, appearance, conflict of interest outright is the conflict of interest between WSP and Pure Sky directly, to which there is none. And Chris, you can jump in here if I'm not fully covering everything that was discussed with, with our attorney. But that was the gist of what we got. And that is the reason why we are considering moving forward with WSP if the board authorizes us to do so. Thank you.
I don't have anything to add to that.
Um, Mr. Slovater?
Yeah, just to understand the RFP process, is it normal to only get one response? And is it because we're a smaller town or where we are? Or we're not in Boston? Or why, why are there so few firms that we can even approach?
It's a good question. So there's several reasons. Um, the one that's, if you submit an RFP earlier in the year, that's when a lot of big firms are getting projects at their doorstep. So a lot of those firms don't really have the time allocated to doing a peer review. They're trying to focus on doing the other projects that bring business to their organization. There's also, if you make the peer review seem too small and specific, that drives away a lot of firms as well. So just to make a correction, the second round of peer review that we RFP'd after the solar actually wasn't the big broader topic that I was talking about. It was just water quality. So I wanted to re-clarify that point. So we had one RFP submitted for the solar and battery storage. And then we had another one submit for just the water quality by itself. And the reason for that was because Conservation was going to do their own peer review for the wetlands and the stormwater. So the zoning board, we thought it was appropriate, and the applicant agreed with us to, to pursue this, to go with the water quality and just the solar, the aspects that wouldn't have been affected as much by the change in the site plans. And the water quality came back with no responses because we as staff anticipated that wasn't a significant enough peer review for a firm to really consider submitting a proposal for. So our idea was to combine the remaining topics into a larger one so we could get the interest of firms who would be willing to solicit this type of work because there's a larger project for them to work on.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yep.
But you, you actually answered part of my question, Rob. My, my question was going to be, is there a scenario where we can just put everything together um, for one large peer review to get more responses from people?
So I also want to add that, um, we, we determined that because of the fact that nobody responded to the water quality peer review RFP, that that was the case, that, you know, people didn't want to waste their time applying for something that was going to take them like a week to do, um, dedicating the manpower to just doing like a small peer review that didn't really generate a big income for them. So the idea of combining it, we thought would attract more firms to want to be our peer review consultant for, for this project. And Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
Ms. Brestrop?
So I want to, uh, concur with Mr. Wachilla. Um, the amount of money that's associated with these peer reviews is relatively small. And for big engineering firms, you know, if they're going after projects that are a hundred thousand dollars or more, it's hard for them to, you know, focus on something that's only going to be eight, eighty-five hundred, which is roughly what WSP is, um, going to charge us. So, um, you know, I think it's, it could build up their reputation or, you know, do something for them, um, publicity wise, but it's not really going to do very much for them in terms of income. So I think that's one of the reasons why, um, we didn't get the, uh, number of responses that we had hoped.
So I, go ahead, Mr.
So I, 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 I understand the hesitation with them being the only response. But does that mean because they don't want to respond that they're not qualified or, or competent to do this? Um, to what everyone just said, that's the nature of business, is so small that more reputable and larger firms do not want to bid. So why wouldn't we go with this company if they're the only one that bid? Understanding what we're facing.
So I kind of alluded to that earlier. There's two reasons. The first reason, um, people might be dissuaded from going with a firm that was the only firm that applied is because that firm might just be a recently created firm or a firm that doesn't have a lot of experience of doing these types of projects behind it. So they're trying to get their foot in the door. And the other reason is because some firms maybe have more resource available to them to where doing a project this small may not impact of, impact them negatively if they were to just dedicate one or two principal staff to doing it. In this case, we think WSP is the latter because they're specialized in doing these types of projects. So they have the manpower to consider doing this project and they already know the area anyways. Like, they did another project in town. So they have a person on staff who, who might know this and might be able to fit the time to do it and just keep a good relationship with the town and the process. Um, that's, that's kind of the impression that I'm getting from it. But Mr. Meadows' main concern was the first part, point that I made, that it could be a firm that's just looking to get a project in, to, on their resume, just to get their foot in the door somewhere. And from my previous job in a different town, that's kind of the experience that we had to deal with for, for peer review and for any sort of project where municipal finances were used.
But, but my question is, based on what you've seen, um, very simple, are they qualified to do this work?
I believe so, yes, because they have a principal who's been doing this type of work for over a decade. And they have staff who are going to be supporting him on this. And they've done other projects, one other big project in town actually, but several projects across the Commonwealth. So I, me, me and Ms. Brestrop believe they're very qualified for this peer review.
Thank you.
Yep.
I've got a couple of questions. Um, one, how far along are we with, um, WSP? Um, given that we've already, I guess we have a contract with them, but kind of on hold. Um, is that if we wish to, if we would decide that we want to go for, um, a new RFP to try to get more, uh, responses? Could we do that? Or would we, would it be in a situation where we breach the contract? And then in that case, would the town have to pay as opposed to the applicant? If we went back and did a, a second RFP? Or where are we on that? So that's the, that's my first question.
I'd like to defer that one to Ms. Brestrop if, if she doesn't mind answering that question.
Yeah, um, we've signed the contract with WSP. In the past, it's been common that the, um, staff chooses the, uh, peer reviewer and sign, and the town signs a contract, um, with the peer reviewer. This has never come up as an issue, um, to the extent that it's coming up on this project. And so we felt comfortable going along with WSP. And then, um, you know, people started asking questions about it. So we're bringing it to you to vote on it. But we did sign a contract and we would have to ask our, uh, town attorney at, um, KP Law, um, what we could do about getting out of this contract if we chose to do that. Um, we wouldn't just do that on our own.
Right, okay, so there's some complications there. Next question I have is, I want to explore the, I want to explore the conflict issue briefly. It seems to me that the, the allegation was that there's potential conflict of interest because Mr. Reedy represented a client who had as a subcontractor WSP. And that in this case, he's representing another client who may have as a subcontractor WSP. And that, that is an appearance of conflict of interest because subcontractors of his two clients, because he had the same subcontractor for two clients. Is that a, is that the concern that was expressed? And is that your concern, Mr. Meadows, as well?
It's, it, my concern was simply the appearance, not, not the actuality, but the appearance. And I, you know, as I say, I have full confidence in Mr. Reedy to be objective on this stuff. But I, it, it, there is the potential to have an appearance of a conflict.
Yeah, m- mister, uh, but Mr. Reed doesn't decide, in this case, I, I agree. It looks like you've got, Mr. Reed doesn't decide who the RF, who the
Right.
peer review person is. That's not just- That's not just, so he had had no role in making that decision. And we have to question, I guess the 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 question for us as a board is number one, we're we're already committed. Number two, um, there may not be other people that want to do this. And number three, that we could look at that we with council, town council reviewing it and our our own view is also important here, looking at this. We can be concerned about a conflict of interest, but we may not be able but it's not a direct conflict of interest. It may be appearance of conflict of interest. And we may not be able to get a peer review from somebody else. And if we do, um, it's going to perhaps it costs the town to pay for this rather than having the solar project paid for. So I'm trying to work work through all this. I don't want to have a conflict of interest, but I think we're maybe down to we're down the road a bit on this one. That it's going to be hard to step back and the appearance of the conflict of interest is a concern, but I don't see the direct conflict of interest. And we have some opinion from the town council, town councillor or town attorney that there is no conflict of interest. So I'm I'm kind of inclined to go with, I don't like the notion of single respondent at all, but we go back out with another RFP, we just be, we would be paying for one and the applicant, we could be paying for one and the applicant could be paying for another. Uh, Mr. Slovater.
I am uh, sensitive to Mr. Meadows concerned about an appearance of a conflict of interest, but if the town staff feels that there is no conflict of interest. And if Mr. Reed clearly had no influence and doesn't control the the peer reviewers, it seems almost just a coincidence that they're the same people. I'm not sure that Mr. Reed even knew they were coming and he doesn't look like much of a mob boss that could put his uh, his own person into play there. So it doesn't I'm sensitive to an appearance of something, but if in fact, there is no conflict, if the town staff is very comfortable that there's no conflict. I don't think that it's appropriate for us to give in to the potential of an appearance that, you know, one person may be concerned. I don't see anything sinister going on here. I'm a little bit, I mean, I now understand better why only one company responded. But, okay, so only one company, but if 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 Mr. Wachilla and Ms. Breschka both feel and the rest of the people who know these people feel that they are competent and qualified and experienced, I don't see a problem with this.
And for the record, I shared.
Just move on and and make the decision.
For the for the record, I share David's position.
The second of Mr. Meadows, did you want to respond?
I I will, I will go along with the town attorney's uh, assumptions.
Yeah. So the second, so that's one issue. The second issue is, and I think we have a third issue that came up. The second issue is to is authorizing of them to advertise an RFP for four different subjects, site design, construction phasing, impacts to water, uh, three, impacts to water quality. Uh, and that is, we'd have to, they'd start the process over again. It seems to me you started with water quality and you combined, you got no responses. You combined it with some other things now. And so you're starting to prod the RFP process over again for uh, number two. Is that correct?
Um, yes, but we already have most of that drafted up. I mean, we have it just sitting in our folders. I mean, we're going to review it. Um, if the board authorizes us to go ahead and do it, we can have it out by early next week.
Yeah.
That started, I mean, it's just, it's not like it, we start the process over. It's not like it's going to delay us any further. I mean,
What I mean is we haven't done it. We haven't sent out the RFP yet.
No, we haven't. We haven't because we wanted to wait for the board to to discuss it with us and authorize us to do so because in the ZBA rules and regs, it says that the the board picks. So if the board authorize a staff to pick on your behalf, then on the record, you have, you're delegating that responsibility to us.
And the second thing I wanted to say is I'd like the notion of the RFP to study. It was rare, rare plants and amphibians and something else. And I don't think that's going to be the same kind of firm that you have for the um, the plant, the water quality construction and site design. And you might find that there's a whole, there's a community of peer review or firms that specialize in this, in that kind of work. And I would think an RFP on those would make sense. I'd leave it up to the board to decide if they agree with me on that. And 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 to write the uh, to identify the subjects, but I think that does make some sense.
Uh, Mr. Chair, actually, I do, I do, there's a few firms that actually are comprehensive enough to include biologists and environmental scientists and their staff. Like there's you'd be surprised how big some of these firms are that offices all over the country that employ like a hundred people, a single branch that have a vast range of different qualifications. So if, even if it was included as a topic, it could potentially it could fit in some firms' scope and purview. It would have to be a larger firm.
Yeah, but here's what I'm thinking. Have a separate RFP on that. Make sure that the person that gets the firms that you that see the RFP for the existing RFP also know there's an RFP out there for the the species, endangered species, uh, whatever, want to phrase that amphibians and bats and endangered um, animals. Uh, and they may want to combine them together and that would, that would be an advantage that they have, but there may also be, I I'm trying to make sure that you have as good of uh, um, coverage of potential uh, engineering firms as possible. Some would be small, um, environmentally focused, some are in construction focus. And if there is one that is both, they see they can combine the two and you can just state that in the RFP.
Okay. No, we can explore that. I mean, that's that's not, yeah, we don't disagree with that.
Then I think you can work that out. Yeah, Ms. Breschka, you had your hand up.
I wonder if Mr. Wachilla would put up the list of um, topics that we had talked about last October for the RFP, the peer reviewer, just so we don't lose anything because I I, in my memory, I thought there were five topics, but I could be wrong about that. But if Mr. Wachilla would just put up the list, we'd know for sure what we're dealing with.
Yeah, let me just find it real quick.
So if that takes some time and that's, that wouldn't affect the first motion. And while Rob is looking that up, let's, let's do the first motion. Um, and then we can discuss more on the second and potentially third instruction to staff. So what I would like to do is move to the first motion, which would be to authorize the planning staff to hire and work with WSP as a peer review consultant on the topic of solar glare study and battery storage on the board's behalf. Do I have a, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Moved and seconded. Yep, Ms. Breschka, is there any discussion, Ms. Breschka?
No, I'm fine. I I didn't need to uh, add to that.
Got it. All right, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, the vote occurs on the motion. Um, the chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
The vote, the vote is four to nothing. Um, first motion passes. Now, Rob is going to pull up the um, earlier topics that we had. And we'll see if those should be included in the included in the second motion or if they've already, or a third motion.
I am still looking for that, Mr. Chair. I am gravely sorry. I am going to find it as fast as I can. It's tricky when you're not on your uh, work desktop or using the uh, laptop that's provided to you.
Uh, it would have been in the packet for the October 12th, um, CBA meeting.
October 12th, I'm going to check there one more time. Let's see.
Well, I think I have those papers still here in my house from the October 2nd.
It is. It's in, it is in 1.6 peer review documents and there's, at the very first heading says peer review topics.
Oh, so it's in our current meeting packet. Okay.
Yes, it is.
It is?
My apologies. Yes, I was smart enough to include it in this bean packet as well. Thank you, everyone. All right, let's uh,
The cover page.
Yeah. Let's screen share that. There we go. All right. Um, so these are the topics. So as I mentioned, the ones that you just voted us to continue with and authorized us to essentially work with WSP on are just number six and number seven. So these are the two that we currently have a consultant for for peer review. Number eight is an optional one we put in there in case we wanted uh, legal fees to be covered by the applicant. And then this one we're going to go with is a third party construction monitoring during the construction process, which the board could make a possible condition, but we, we are exploring that idea. Um, but that'll be for later on. Um, but right now we're combining site design, construction phasing, which includes tree removal and the two construction phases. I believe phase A is to um, grub all the tree roots and stabilize the site and phase B is to install the actual solar panels themselves. Um, impact to wetlands, after discussing with Conservation Commission, they're going to do their own peer review on this as well. So uh, Ms. Breschka, I see you're pointing your finger. It's out there. Do you want to comment on that?
So are we saying that we don't need number three because the Conservation Commission is uh, taking care of that? Okay.
Yes. So number three and number four, the Conservation Commission are going to do their own peer review on. So we're going to kind of combine the data that they get from their peer review with our own peer review and use that as a way of um, analyzing the project broadly. So we don't have the applicant pay for the same topic twice essentially. So if cons- Yes.
I understand that about number three. I understand how that's solely the responsibility of the Conservation Commission. But as far as stormwater management, I think there's a lot of stormwater management that's going to have to go on that is not under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. It's outside of the hundred foot buffer and I think that the zoning board of appeals should have its own peer review of stormwater management for the site as a whole. And we can take advantage of what the Conservation Commission finds, but I really feel like it's important to look at the site as a whole and not just um, have the focus be on the wetland and issues and the hundred foot buffer. So that would be my opinion. So I think that we need peer review on topics one through five. That's what I would, or excuse me, uh, one, two, four and five. That would be my opinion.
And also, uh, Mr. Chair, we should, if the board wants us to do stormwater management as peer review topic, we should add that to the motion.
Yeah.
You would have to make as well. And we, I agree with Chris. She brings up a good point. Um, I guess looking at the whole project comprehensively, stormwater design is very important. And if we group that as well as war quality with the first two items, I think that's going to be a big enough peer review that is going to attract more firms than zero.
Hmm.
Yeah. Well, I I was unaware that the Conservation Commission wouldn't do stormwater management. So I agree with that. So one, two, four and five.
Yep.
And we would amend the motion to include stormwater management plan.
Yep. I would say stormwater management and also do like a hyphen design. So stormwater, not just the management of storm, but also how they design their stormwater mitigation systems as well. Both very important things.
Do we want to add the plant survey, amphibian survey and bat survey here, or do we want to have it as a separate motion?
You know, Craig, my suggestion would be to have it as a separate motion to instruct the staff to make sure that they they let the RFP knows that there's, there's this, if they let the respondents or the people that are reading this RFP know that there's a second one out there or a third one out there. Because I think that does give big firms an opportunity to do both. And a small firm may just, we may have a good small firm that just does environmental work.
Right.
No, I agree with that. I think doing it as a separate motion is good because that allows for us to do as a separate RFP as well. Um, but we could also go to firms asking them about both. So we can get an idea of interest and stuff like that early on. Yeah.
You're reaching out. Okay, I I sense, because I mean, I don't hear any objections to that. Um, I sense a consensus that we have site design, construction phasing, stormwater management plan and um, and design, stormwater management plan and design. Is that, is that the terms you use, Rob?
Yep, stormwater management and stormwater design.
Yep. All right. And then we have impacts to water quality. So unless we have people who wish to discuss that further, uh, I would entertain a motion to authorize planning staff to advertise an RFP for the following peer review topics. Site design, construction phasing, impacts to water quality, stormwater management and stormwater design.
So moved.
And and to authorize the planning staff to select and hire a peer review consultant on the board's behalf while adhering to the appropriate processes of the ZBA rules and regulations on peer review selection. All right. So let's have the, let's have the staff do their jobs, right? All right, any discussion? If not, vote occurs on the motion. Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
And the last thing is I think we should do the um, threatened and endangered species and plants. So that's, is I heard it tonight. And if you have others, it's amphibians. It's bats. Is there any other? Uh, and then there was some, some
Plants.
Plants, some plants. And and I think we have to be more um, specific than just plants. Um, otherwise we could have a pretty big, you know,
There's a, there's a rare species that that uh, public comment
Yeah.
reference. I don't remember what it was. I'll have to look through the recording. Uh, Mr. Cashin actually is raising his hand if you want to to tell us what that.
You know, at, we rarely have public comment during um, public meetings, but this is the time when we need additional information. So if Mr. Cashin can give us some language.
Yes, could you please, Mr. Cashin, tell us the plant species that you reference?
Yeah, it's um, the common name is small world and it's W H O R L E D. Pogonia, P O G O N I A. And I can um, provide the scientific name if that helps. Um, there, I was informed of two other rare plant species uh, on the site as well. Um, and I can get you the the names of those. I think with, okay.
Go, go ahead. What I was thinking, go ahead, we finish up and then I have a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much, you know, now's the time to talk about it, but I'd just say, you know, if if you need help in sort of crafting the language of the RFP, I'd be glad to help with that. You want a survey that is going to focus on, you know, it's, it's got to be appropriately timed. The Pogonia in particular has a very narrow blooming period. And so to to properly identify that species, you have to be out there at the right time of year. Can't just um, you know, so doing a plant survey after the plant blooms is not going to be sufficient. So I think you need to sort of outline those criteria in your RFP. Um, I would add that, you know, in addition to searching for and establishing presence and abundance and distribution of rare plants, it would be helpful to have just an overall inventory of plants. That's kind of typical in a rare plant survey is that the botanist will record all the plants that they see. That's going to give you an idea of biodiversity. Um, and kind of same goes through, um, same is true for bats um, and amphibians, you know, um, bats are are very difficult to detect that require specialized equipment. And so that would require, you know, that, that's something you'd want to specify in the RFP.
So, so one of the things I was, my suggestion, uh, and I thank you, Mr. Cashin, for your expertise. So my suggestion is that we authorize the planning staff to advertise an RFP on the following peer review topics. Um, so on the, the um, incidence of rare plants, including or such as small world Patagonia and others. Right? Amphibians and rare, uh, uh, threatened amphibians and bats. But I, you know, I don't know that we want to tell them that we want to have an entire um, inventory of every plant on the site or every animal that walks through the sites. I think we're just looking at the threatened or endangered um, plants that occur on that site. Um, because that's what we're, that's what we're concerned about. So and the stat, and then authorize the staff to be specific in the we will authorize the staff to be specific in the um, in the RFP, but I think we give them general direction in this, in the next motion.
And I also could, um, I'll, I'll look up Mr. Cashin's information and reach out to him as well for for um, his um, advice on how to craft a good RFP because he did bring up so good points there. Um, thank you.
Does anybody think we need to be more specific than the mention of? rare plants such as the small world Patagonia? And threatened or endangered amphibians, bats and other plants.
I, I think it should say to include, but not limited to.
Yes, I, I agree with that. Yep. To include, but not limited to.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. And this was still part of the motion, right?
Yes. Well, this is, this is the third, this is the third motion, third motion, right? The third peer review is to authorize the planning staff to advertise an RFP for the following peer review topics as we just discussed with include, but not limited to those topics we discussed. And to, um, to select and hire a periodical consultant on the board's behalf, while adhering to the appropriate processes of the ZDA rules and regulations on peer review selection. Do we have consensus on that? Close enough? And that's specific enough for Chris and Rob? Yep. Okay.
That's fine.
Then I would entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
I can, great. Any further discussion? If not, the vote occurs. I vote aye. Mr. Meadows.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Slovater.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries four to nothing. We're done with peer reviews, I think.
This, uh, Mr. Chair, Cory has her hand up.
Yes, Cory. Yes.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Oh, she's on the phone. Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Um, I'll, I'll make it quick. Um, I, uh, we certainly will, you know, go forward with these studies. Um, I just wanted to make it clear that the ZANRA will demonstrate this is a potential for habitat. It is not saying that it is there. And you'll see with, especially with the bats, there are along the entire east coast of the, of the United States. It's really just the potential for the bats to be there as habitat. But there's no known hibernacula. This study, and we'll do a study, you know, we'll show that. And then I also wanted to make another point. This will all be funded by Peer Sky. We'll work with the, we'll work with staff and, you know, with the peer reviewer to make sure the funds are sent and, you know, processed appropriately. But this will not be funded by any taxpayer dollars by the town of Amherst. Just wanted to make that clear.
Yep.
Thank you very much for voting tonight.
All right. So, um, I think we've finished the business of the solar panels and the solar project. So I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on ZDA FY 2023. Chutesbury Road Solar Project to a specific date. And we need a specific date to do that, Rob. And I'm not sure what you, what we're looking at in terms of the dates for the next hearing.
I, I So actually it was requested by the applicant before this meeting to consider the first meeting in June. And if we're sticking to the normal, I, I believe it's second, fourth Thursday of every, is it first and third or second, fourth? I'm confusing myself now. My apologies. Um, second, fourth Thursday of every month. The first meeting would be June 13th to continue this hearing date too. Does that work for the panelists and the applicant as a date to continue this hearing too?
Not a great date for me. I'm not sure that I could have some conflict that day.
Okay. So the next date is June, June 27th is the next day after that.
Well, then we're getting into that time when I'm gone. So what about, and, and what about that Thursday, the first Thursday of the month?
The sixth of June?
Yeah.
Um, how do the other board members feel about that? That's an, that's an off week meeting. But if everybody's schedule is clear, would that work for David, Craig and Everold?
Would that replace one of the other meetings?
Probably not. If there's a bunch of submissions that we get, it's very possible that if we don't get any at all for June 13th, that that meeting is just going to get canceled or become administrative meeting.
But the, the other good news, Mr. Henry, is we've got a full set of, of alternate members now.
That's true. Yes.
Full set of full members now. So, you know, if you are, if there's a new topic that comes up for that time when you can't be there, probably can cover it. But a continuing, it's more difficult when we have a continuing situation like we have here. Uh, I, you know, we can't just kind of come in and out, especially with only four members.
I can make June 6th work.
Yep.
Mr. Healy said it was probably just a touching base anyway. So.
Yeah, let's make June 6th work.
Yeah, I, I can, I can attend June 6th also.
All right. Great. So the motion is to continue this public hearing on ZDA FY 2023-18 to June 6th at six o'clock. Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Vote moved and seconded. Uh, the vote occurs. Chair votes aye. Mr. Slovater.
Aye.
Meadows.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. All right. We'll see you guys all on the 6th.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciated.
Hi. Can I ask a quick question of Mr. Wachilla?
Sure.
Or, or the chair or anyone actually. Is the thing on June 6th likely to only be the solar project?
Yes, because it's an off week meeting.
Off week. So we're doing it specially for them. So it'll only be solar and it may not be a lengthy meeting anyway.
No, it's just going to be this because usually we schedule public hearings or sorry, new applications for a normally scheduled meeting date. Yeah.
But it's, it's fine. Purely informational. I'm happy if it goes to nine 30. I don't know.
And you're doing it for me. You're doing it for me.
I'm doing it for the chair. So he has
Doing it for me. Yep. We're not doing it for Peer Sky. We're doing it for me. Right? Okay. Thank you. The next order of business is ZDA FY 2024-12. Ryan Baker, formerly Patricia Teton, requests for a special permit under section 6.31 of zoning by law to allow for the construction of a single family home on a flag lot, requesting waivers from building, and I don't think lighting plans anymore, but from building plants at 368A Shays Street, map 20D parcel 78, our end neighborhood residence zoning district continued from February 22nd, 2024. There's not been a site plan since we've initially, since we initially looked at this matter back in February. And I just want to pull up the submissions.
So Mr. Chair, actually there was, um, oh, sorry. You said site plans instead of site visit, Mr. Chair.
Site visit. I meant site visit, not site plan. I have two questions in front of me at this moment. And here we go. Um, the submissions we have are in the draft application report. It's a light model. Submissions include light model and examples, lighting specifications and lighting comparisons were received since the last meeting. We have, they're no longer requesting a waiver from lighting plants because they have a lighting plant, a light model and examples. And that's it for, that's it for staff submissions or I saw no public comments to public submissions as well. So if there's nothing else, um, this is an opportunity for the applicant to make their case.
So, uh, Brian Baker is in attendance and I did, uh, give him a panel's invitation. He chose to accept it. Uh, Mr. Chair, I do want to note that on the site plans, he did send us an updated site plan that has the details for the retaining wall that he's going to install on sites. Um, that wasn't in the last copy of the site plans, but it was requested to be provided by the town engineer. Yes. So he's finally, uh, the applicants finally provide that to us.
Okay. So, Mr. Baker, um, please identify yourself and your address and let us make your presentation. And for your, for your information, Mr. White has joined the panel for this matter.
All right. Hello, Mr. White. My name is Brian Baker. Uh, my home address is 95 Carlo Drive. The property and address is 368A Shays Street. I believe that, uh, Mr. Wachilla noted before that there was a typo, so I'm just reminding you of that because you said you might forget.
That's good. Yeah. I, I tried to catch it. So.
All right.
368.
Yeah. So last time there were, uh, two requests. Number one was for a, uh, wall detail, which was provided in the updated civil plan. Um, and the second part was concerns around lighting and lighting trespass and glare on the neighbors. Rather than submitting a plan, I submitted a modeled image because I think it was clearer to do that to show the intention. I'm not sure if you'd like me to share the documents or if you have the documents available.
I think that the, let's deal with the lighting plan first or the lighting idea first.
Yeah.
So, you know, it'd be helpful to you to share the before, there's something that's before and after. I'm just not quite sure what that is. I guess that's what you originally proposed and then you changed your mind and have a different.
No, that's not the case. Uh, those are just examples of, of what I'm proposing. So what I'm proposing is shielded dark sky lighting. The concern was lighting trespass on the neighbors and glare. And the suggestions at the time were, you know, how are you going to be able to build a fence high enough? Are you going to be able to get trees in the right places? Um, in order to prevent, you know, a, a harsh light shining through the back window of the neighbor's place. And, um, I think that, you know, those are, are valid points. And so what I'm proposing instead is dark sky compliant lighting. The name, you know, comes from the idea that it's not meant to cause light pollution. And, you know, limit visibility of stars and whatnot. Um, but the light that I've specified, you know, the other benefit of dark sky lighting is it also reduces lighting trespass to adjacent properties. So if you look at the shielded light and at the model, and I can also share that the actual model and rotate around it. Because the light is shielded horizontally, the only trespass in terms of glare is in a cone out from the light. If you look at the specification sheet where the light is turned to its side, you can see that the LED light array is recessed up into the cylinder. And so there is no direct view to the light from anywhere. And the model is meant to show with the stepped contours and whatnot, that even with the, the ground dropping down, there is no angle at which you could directly see those lights and have the experience of glare. You would have to be within, you know, 10, 15 feet of the house in order to have the experience of glare from those lights because of how the light is recessed up into the shielded fixture. And I think if you share the specification sheet, you'll be able to see a little bit of how that's constructed and why that's the case. Oh, good. You put them all together. So this is, these are examples of dark sky lighting and how you cannot see the glare from the actual bulb. You just see the glow on the surfaces that you're trying to light. Uh, and that it doesn't project out. Or the ones at the bottom there on the stairs are not dark sky compliant lights. Those are stair lights, but the ones above are, this is another example where you'd have to be right up adjacent in order to be able to see glare from the light that the light is directed and doesn't trespass into adjacent properties. And then those other ones are examples of more conventional lighting fixtures that aren't dark sky compliant and how that issue of glare, uh, is very apparent in these situations. Um, I don't know if you can see through the fence there in that example, but the point of that one is there was another one. And there's a person standing in that opening of the gate of the fence and the glare is so bad that you can't see the person because you're blinded. And then there's another example where you can easily see the person because they've shielded the light. So my, my proposal is to have all of the lights specified as shielded fixtures that would not allow light trespass to adjacent properties.
All right. So that's the light, your lighting proposal. And the only thing I, it seems to make sense. I, I understand what you're saying. Problem, the thing that, that you're trying to solve is that that cone of light doesn't extend, as, as the ground drops away, the cone of light goes farther down the, 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 uh, ground towards the neighbors as the, um, light as, as the, as the ground drops away. If it dropped, it was, it was flagged, it only goes so far. It drops away, it has to go down a little bit farther. And you're saying that it doesn't, it won't, that you looked at it and said that it won't be within, it won't trespass on their land because it won't go, it won't proceed down that hill far enough to trespass on their land. Is that what you're saying?
It looks like Rob wants to say something.
Rob?
Yeah, just want to clarify a point. Um, so usually the biggest issues from light fixtures is that, you know, he brings us a good point about the glare. So, you know, vehicle headlights is always the biggest thing the board is trying to condition against with screening and stuff like that. Because the headlight, the, 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 the majority of the light is going towards that person's window or view shed. And so what he's proposing is that the main, I guess the visual of the light, the brightness of the light is directed upwards. So the residual light is being pointed down in reflecting motion. That's still able to light the area around it without going into neighboring properties or really causing a big glare on abutting properties nearby. So that's why the fixture is designed a way to where it prevents that glare from spilling out while still be able to light the area around it. Am I, am I understanding that correctly, Brian?
I mean, sort of. So, so prior to dark sky considerations, when people started trying to control light trespass, you know, and a lot of what they were trying to control was light trespass up in order to keep animals from having issues and in order to keep us from being able to see stars in order to keep, you know, just illumination from getting up and polluting the sky in such a way that you can't see stars in the city. But the, the other benefit of it is that most light fixtures that were unregulated in any way are like a bulb sitting inside of a black, a glass case. You can see the whole bulb. Light is shooting in all directions. And the whole point of putting up a fence or screening trees is to put some sort of barrier around that bulb. Well, the nice thing about dark sky compliant lights is that the fixture is the barrier around the bulb. Like you said, with headlights or things like that, the, the light trespass that is, you know, harmful or annoying or, you know, really bad in cities is the light where you're looking around and all of these bare bulbs are exposed in all directions. And so as a screening issue, what, what it does is it puts the screening at the level of the fixture and light can only go down and illuminate the space directly around the house, illuminate the front door, illuminate the front stoop, the areas where you need to see so that people don't trip on their steps or in danger, can't see who's at their front door. But it doesn't allow light to go sideways. And do you want me to bring up that, that spec sheet or does somebody have that spec sheet to look at?
You know, so I understand what you're saying. I don't, I understand, I kind of understand dark sky compliant lighting. All I care about is I don't want the neighbors who are downhill from you to be, have their property washed with your lights. That's what, and, and you're, and you're asking, and you're not providing a lighting plan. And I think you are in good faith, providing a plan, a, not a specific, you don't have a photometric plan, but you have, I think in good faith, given us some, um, of what you think will not, will prevent light washing on your neighbor's property.
So there is, there is a photo.
And my concern is that if it does that, if it does wash on your neighbor's property, you've got to change this because we're going to condition this application, uh, the, the special permit on making sure that the light doesn't wash on their property. Right?
Can I, can I make a clarification?
Yep.
So on the specification sheet, there is photometric data and that cone of light that's shown in the model is based off of the photometric data from that spec sheet. It is showing the, the, that, that spec sheet shows a distance that the light will be able to travel based on the height of the light. And, and that, that angle of light off of the photometric sheet is what is shown in that model that shows how far the light will be able to go, which is far, far away. It's, you know, it's dozens of feet away from the, the neighbor's property in terms of where that will be able to project.
So that's great. All I'm saying is that we are not requiring, we're not requiring you to go photometrics study.
Well, he has the data. He has, he has.
And you have data for lamps that, that show, that report not to wash on a neighboring property. If it doesn't work and you're wrong, you're going to have to change it. All right. That's my point. That that's going to be a condition of the application of the special permit. And you, understood?
Yeah.
Okay. Rob?
I do want to, so he, he did essentially get the data they used to make those photometric plans. Like he had it, he just, instead of doing like the site plan with the numbers, he just did like a 3D model version of it.
At the last meeting, people were saying that they had a hard time visualizing where the light would land. Um, and I wanted to make sure, especially in terms of elevation and height. And that's why I did it from the side instead of as a plan, because I wasn't sure that it would be as clear where the light would follow.
I think you have made a good faith effort. I think you're trying to do the right thing, right? I just want to make sure that you know that absent a, a lighting plan that we approved, because we didn't have a light, a specific lighting I just want to make sure that you know that absent a a lighting plan that we approved, because we didn't have a light, a specific lighting plan. If this doesn't work out and it's washing on the neighbors, you're gonna have to fix that.
Understood.
Okay. Um, and you've, any other questions about lighting? I don't, I I don't mean to dominate the uh discussion about lighting. Mr. Slover, I know you raised the issue in the last meeting about the lighting and and the sloping.
Yeah, and it was my major concern. I mean, the the water runoff was the other one, but the lighting was. Because the property is so steep in a certain point that even if the light. And I do recognize that there is a good faith effort and the drawing is probably fairly accurate. The spec sheet has a lot of figures on it. I, and I don't think it's deceptive. But I share the chair's concern that it it may look like it's going to work and then once it's up there. Because the property is as steep as it is, if somebody is looking up. We may, you may not expect that the glare will be visible, but. At a certain angle, it may, it may just be, and I support what the chair said, so. Yes, this seems like a good faith effort. I can't quite re, I I looked at the spec sheet, it's got a table. And diminishing candle power, visibility and everything, and it looks like, yeah, maybe it would work. Uh, when it's applied to that particular property, I just share the. The chair's warning that uh, yep, it looks like it might work, and if it doesn't, you're gonna have to do something, so. I I can support this as a good faith effort that answers the concern that I brought up last time. But it needs to, in practical terms, it needs to work.
Yeah. And then you had another, you were gonna raise a second point and I interrupted you about the lighting, Mr. Baker, and I I want to give you a chance to get back to your second point.
Oh, what, did I have a second point about the lighting?
No, uh, you were gonna move on to something else.
Oh, I I started with that. It was about the the other con- uh requirement was that I come with a uh retaining wall detail, which is included in the civil plan.
Yeah. And Rob, do you want to throw that up?
Yeah, I can do that. Uh, just one second.
So we can see it and then the public can see it and we can move on to. Any other further questions or public comments?
Mr. Chair, I do want to announce that we have five people in attendance now for this hearing.
Alright.
Alright, here are the plans. So this is the overall site plan. I also want to note that the shape of the house also changed as well.
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention that.
So I believe there used to be a part back here, right? And then you made it um.
Right, so Patricia Tieden, who was going to buy the property and has since withdrawn. Um, had a particular pre-modular or a modular pre-manufactured home that she wanted on the property. This actually has a slightly smaller footprint and it's just not, doesn't have all the jigs and jags in and out that were complicating. Uh, it it basically just smoothed out the the perimeter, but it's a slightly smaller footprint. Uh, the civil engineer says it impacts the stormwater considerations, not at all, uh and redrew it uh like this. Uh, and so everything else. The rainwater, uh, the rain garden, um, and the retaining walls and everything else is still in place, it's just taken out. The jogs that were in the front and the back uh in the perimeter to make it a simpler profile. And that's reflected in the model.
And then this is the um retaining wall detail right here.
Correct.
Any questions from members of the board? Any comments? Alright.
Um, Mr. Chair, Mr. White has his hand raised.
Oh, Mr. White? Oh, you're you're muted. There you go.
Yep. Um, so my question is more to the project application draft. Um, with reviewing the updates on it, um, considering that Mrs. Tien is no longer involved, um, we might just need to modify this. Uh, but under the proposal section. Uh, it states the flag lot was created two thousand sixteen, I'm skipping ahead a little bit, but it says. The current owner, Brian Baker, is selling the land to the applicant Patricia Tieden, who wishes to construct a single family home with an attached garage. Um, so since that is no longer the case, would that need to be modified in the application?
Yes, yes, yeah, she is no longer purchasing the property.
So, um, Philip, could you tell me what page you found that on of the project application report so I can update it?
Absolutely. It's on page two, um, towards the bottom under proposal.
Thank you.
No, not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, good catch. Thank you. Alright, um, if there's no other comments, um, we open this up for a public comment. Only comments from the board will open up the public comment. Is there anybody on the board or any tent public, any members of the public who wish to comment on this?
If you wish to make a comment, please use the raise hand function or press star nine if you're calling into the meeting on telephone.
Seems we have no. Alright, seems we have nobody who wishes to speak on this matter.
Yep.
Alright. That being the case, uh, I would entertain a motion that we move to a public meeting on um. This matter ZBA. FY twenty twenty four dash twelve and while keeping the public hearing open. So I have a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on moving to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Meadows? And Mr. Slow, I I saw the nod from Mr. Meadows, so mark him down as a yes, even though he's muted, and Mr. Slover?
Aye.
Alright, we got, the vote is five to nothing. Um, so. This is the time, the public meeting is the time where the board deliberates on the on the matter before us and it's not generally a time for public comment. And my first reaction is I think the applicant has answered some of the questions that we raised um in good faith. And I'm inclined to approve the application, the special permit application at this point. Um, I wonder if anybody else has comments? General comments? If not, I'd move to the conditions and we can start talking about those. Mr. Slover?
I I have a question of Mr. Wachilla, I think.
Yep.
Did, did any town engineers? Who know more about stormwater runoff and retention than I do? Review the site plans and render an opinion on whether. The rain garden and the general stormwater runoff control is properly done.
Yep, so uh Jason Skiles, who was our town engineer, he works in DPW, he reviewed the plans, he provide feedback and actually. He said the plans look good, the rain garden was a good idea. Um, the only concern he had was that the retain wall details were included. So that's why the applicant had to provide them after the fact, but David, to answer your question, yes, he did, and he thinks it's a good design.
And and is re- and is reasonably confident that.
Yes.
That the new, the newly created impermeable sur- impermeable surface or something in English. Um, that will increase um stormwater runoff is not going to be a problem. For the properties below.
No, because of where the rain garden's placed, it's placed in a spot where it can catch all that runoff and it's graded down towards it. In a way that funnels the water in that direction.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was concerned about those people and a lot of water. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Um. There are a series of conditions in the um project, the draft project application report. Uh, we can review those quickly. I don't have anything to add to that. I don't know if anybody else has other conditions they wish to. To add to this or if they have any other concerns on this, this project that they wish to um raise.
Mr. Chair, I do want to note that I'll update those dates for the approved plans, because I I had forgotten to do that in this most recent update. Um, I will. Ensure that under condition one, that those plans referenced are all accurate. And I'll include the lighting plans in there as well. So my apologies for not including that information into this part of the report.
Alright. So I, I, the first condition is, you know, general, you gotta build to the plan that you've submitted. Uh, the second one deals with lighting to be down shielded or downcast, and this is the one um. That where if, Mr. Baker, where if it's not um. If trespass, if it does trespass on other property and they bring it to the building commissioner's attention and he deems that it's. That that's happening, you're gonna have to fix it, okay? Alright, street numbers um for the dwelling unit should be clearly marked. There's unimpeded access shall be provided across either strip or the easement at fifty feet wide. I'm not sure whether that's there, Rob. I I looked at that before and is that just allowing the public to cross the, the access strip?
So that's, that's usually a a typical condition we include for flag lots because uh we want to ensure continuous access between the street. And where the building is along the flagpole portion of it. It's just a way to ensure that there's no. Sort of um obstruction that goes in there. I mean, we we usually include this as a safeguard in conditions for flag lots. Um, but if the board wants me to take it out, we could, but it's just.
If it's included, I just didn't recognize it and that.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense, it makes sense.
It's it's actually, um, it's a requirement of the flag law uh section of the bylaw anyways, and we usually throw in here just so we can enforce it.
Number five deals with um having, before you get a building permit, the you need the uh trench permits and other things from the Amherst Public Works. The rain gardens shall be maintained in good operational condition. As detailed in the approved stormwater operation and maintenance program, we looked at that and talked about that uh at the last meeting. Parking shall occur only on improved surfaces and it should be maintained as needed. Uh, and the trash receptacles shall be screened from the public's right of way or is that the public view? The public right of way on the streets, yeah.
That's usually what we go with because um the bylaw says it can't be seen from the street. So as long as it's not seen from the street and screened somewhere outside, then they're in compliance.
Okay, does anybody have any other, any questions about these conditions or additional conditions that they wish to add? If, if not, I think it answers my questions regarding the lights. Um. I would move, I would entertain a motion that we approve the conditions one through eight. And authorize the staff to make technical conforming changes, including updating the plans that were submitted by the applicant in the correct dates. Do I have such a motion? Yep, I got a a yes from Mr. Slover and I have a second from Mr. Meadows, is that right? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. It's made and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? If there's no for this, yes.
I have a question.
Yep.
If Mr. Baker sells this property after it's completed, do all of these conditions automatically go to the new owner?
Yes.
I'm thinking mostly of maintaining the rain garden in proper operational condition. That's a requirement that will attach to this property no matter who owns it, correct?
Yes, it it, as long as there's, as long as that special permit, it's not attached to the, it's not a, it's not attached to the deed. But as long as there's a special permit for this property and he needs a special permit to keep it there. It will, it will um attach to that special permit. This, I I don't know how this special permit, I don't think can go away.
No, it can't. It has to remain in effect and.
Because you couldn't have a house there without the special permit.
Yeah, and usually it's enforced if um say the rain garden was so bad and. Clogged and it was spilling onto people's properties, so somebody complains to inspection services, then that's when this permit would be reinforced. And the new owner would have to clean it up. Um, so yes, to answer your question, David, yes, it would be.
And the new owner has to comply with the, with the um.
Yes.
The operations plan that's submitted for the rain garden.
And I do want to bring up one thing, Mr. Chair, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
So when I was drafting these conditions with Mr. Moore, the building commissioner, who couldn't be here tonight, he told me that since because. This is gonna be a single family home on a flag lot as opposed to a more intensive residential use. Um, say that would be associated like a rental use or something like that. Uh, he didn't feel it was necessary to include a condition where a new owner of this property would have to meet with the building commissioner. And that's what he suggested to me. That's why that condition wasn't placed in here. Because you know, for other projects, we typically include that as a condition where owner has to meet the building commissioner to ensure compliance with the management plan. But since this is such a low intensive use, he felt it was necessary to leave that out. And does the board, is the board in agreement with that, that that's an appropriate path for this type of development in this project?
Well, we don't typically impose that condition on owner occupied new homes.
Okay.
I don't think, I mean, I.
No, no, we we don't historically.
By new homes, but but we don't typically do that and.
Yeah. I just want to make that perfectly clear to the board as to why, you know, if a new owner were to come in. They wouldn't be required to have to meet with the building commissioner. Because it's a single family home, it's going from one person to another, but these conditions will always remain in effect with the land. They don't expire as soon as it's enacted upon, as soon as Mr. Baker sells it to somebody and they construct a building on it. Or he constructs a building on himself, the permit becomes effective. So you have, you have to exercise special permit within two years after it's granted in order for it to remain current and effective still.
If the conditions attach to any effective.
Yes.
Permit and that special permit is.
Yes.
On this.
It, and the two-year statute that I just mentioned is state law, so that's not gonna nullify itself for any reason.
Okay. I have no problem with not requiring the next owner to sit down with the building commissioner. The next owner of a single family home.
Yes.
Alright. Any comments or questions? If not, um, I would entertain the motion I stated, which is approval of the conditions, authorizing staff to. Uh, make technical conforming changes, including updating, correcting the dates of the most recent submissions by the applicant.
So moved.
Second? Alright. The vote occurs, if there's no further discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the conditions. Um, Chair votes aye. Mr. Slover?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Alright, the vote is five to nothing, the conditions as um are approved. Next, we have a couple of findings we have to make. Um, in addition to the findings. The the normal findings under um ten point three eight. And there are a series of, there's a series of findings regarding dimensional regulations and flag lots. And to summarize them. Each of the, each of the applicable requirements of the flag lot section, section three point two, three. Four, five. Uh, six, seven, and seven point zero are all met by the applicant and the the dimensions all work. Um, and they're all within the, the um zoning bylaw. There's one that is not um applicable, and I'm just, I'm not seeing that one right now. I thought there was one that was not applicable. Oh, at one point the. Part of six point three three, the driveway does not exceed a forty-five degree angle, so. Um, I would move that we adopt the findings on section six point three two, six point three three. Six point three four, six point three five. Six point three six. Okay, but that's the one that there's no flag lots adjacent to it, six point three seven. Um, and seven point seven zero. Is there a motion to do that or are people just looking at these findings? Let's have a motion out there and we can discuss it if people have a question.
So moved.
Alright, if any discussion, moved and seconded, I heard two voices. There's no further discussion on the findings for um the flag lot section. Um, the vote occurs on approving, making, the board making these findings. Uh, Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Slover?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
And Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Alright, and now we have our our standard ten point three eight, um, findings are are required. Ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one deals with suitability. Ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one deals with suitability that of where it's located, and this is a residential district. And it's a residential use. Ten point three eight two, three eight three, three eight five, and three eight seven all deal with. Um, creating a nuisance or, um, disrupting, uh, substantial inconvenience or hazard to neighbors. Or visibly, visibly offensive structures, also light trespass. And I think that the, in the conditions that the, um, um, applicant has proposed, including the, the downcast. Uh, lighting and his, his, um, attempt, and I think goodwill attempt to keep from light trespass. Uh, he has met the, as well as the, the rain garden, are the, the rain garden and the, the, um. Brit wall or the stone wall, he has met the requirements of ten point three eight, three eight three, three eight five, and three eight seven. Ten point three eight four deals with appropriate facilities for the proper use, it's got, um, town water and sewer on site. Ten point three eight six deals with parking sign regulations, parkings in conformance with Article seven of the bylaw. Ten point three eight seven deals with providing safe and convenient vehicular traffic. Um, that, nobody found that there was any, I think we can find that there's no issues on vehi- vehicular and pedestrian movement on the site. Uh, ten point three eight eight does not apply, uh, if we're not dealing with off-street loading and. Of, of, uh, vehicles. Ten point three eight nine deals with proposal, provide adequate methods of disposal. Of sewage and refuge, the applicant has proved if they will have an appropriate facilities. And they will eventually hire a trash service, that's in the management plan. Ten point three nine zero does not apply, it deals with, um, flood hazards. Ten point three nine one protects the, deals with, uh, unique or important natural historic features. Um. You know, I guess trees are natural features, and many of them are still, will be, will remain on the site with minimal. Trees being, uh, cut down only for the, uh, building site. Um, the proposal, ten point three nine two, the proposal provides adequate landscaping, including screening of adjacent residential uses. Uh, we discussed this in the, in the first meeting, where they're dealing with, where they showed the natural screening. Uh, on all sides of the property, and to, to reduce the amount of light trespass from cars. Ten point three nine three, uh, provides, um, protection on, um, intrusion of lighting. Parking lot and exterior lighting. Um, again, that, the, the applicant has provided the plan. That I think will satisfy that, but if it does not, um, he'll have to fix it, and he understands that. Ten point three nine four deals with, um, impact on steep slope floodplains and scenic views grades changes. The slopes in the site won't be, won't be, um. Won't be affected, except for the, um, fill on the place where the, the house will sit, and there's. Uh, building walls, retaining walls to support the structures. Uh, ten point three nine five deals with disharmony with respect to terrain and, on, on the use and scale. Basically, does it, does it fit in with the neighborhood, and does not, I don't think it creates a disharmony within the terrain, the use, the scale of architecture. Or the kind of building in the, in that area. Ten point three nine six deals with screening for storage areas, the, the. Applicant will, um, um, screen the trash receptacles, but, or keep them in the garage. Ten point three nine eight deals with harmony of general purpose and intent of the bylaws and the goals of the master plan. This creates more housing in Amherst, uh, more residential housing, speaking of single-family housing. So for all those reasons, I think we can find that the application meets the requirements of tenth, section ten point three eight. Um. From ten point three eight zero to ten point three nine six. Is there any, um, I'll, I'll entertain a motion, we can have discussion on the, on the findings. Uh, I, I'd move, I'd entertain a motion to approve the, the findings, ten point three eight.
So moved.
A move.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the findings, and the chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Sloveter.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
The next order of business is the vote to approve the special permit application. Um, ZBA FY twenty twenty four dash twelve with conditions. And to close the hearing, the public hearing on such application. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, uh, the vote occurs on the motion. Mr. Henry, or the chair votes aye first, Mr. Henry, second.
Aye.
I'm rushing through this, I'm forgetting my own vote. Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Meadows.
Aye.
And Mr. Sloveter.
Aye.
The vote is five zero to approve the special permit application and to close the hearing on this special permit. Mr. Baker, uh, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
I hope you're happy in your home, and I bet your neighbors are, um. Do benefit from your goodwill in trying to avoid the light trespass or, and the water going down to their property. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brian, before you head out, I will, uh, touch base with you tomorrow regarding next steps. Um, just a heads up, there is a twenty-day appeal period process for special permits, so I'll, I'll discuss all that with you tomorrow, okay?
Sounds fantastic, appreciate it.
No problem.
Congratulations, Mr. Baker.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
You as well, thank you.
Um, the next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. So this is a place where the public can speak on any matter that they wish, except for those before the board. I see no hands, no attendees. Whose hands are up? The only people that I, I think that are listening anymore are us.
Just, just two. Two people who forgot to log out of the meeting still listen to us.
Yeah, just us and our transatlantic friend over there, so we get. That's what's going on in Amherst tonight. Um, it's, Rob, is there any new business? What's the schedule coming up?
Uh, so we have two hearings scheduled for May ninth, uh, one of them is for a. Converting a single-family home into a non-owner occupied duplex on, uh. I think it's North Whitney Street, and the other one is for. Oh, gosh, it's escaping me. Um, it'll come back to me, but it has. It's for a flag lot, actually, forty-seven Red Gate Lane, um, applicant's trying to put a single-family home on a flag lot. Um, and then on April thirtieth, uh, which is Tuesday, a few of you on the call actually have a meeting for continued hearing. Uh, fifty McLoughlin Street, in which the existing special permit is gonna be modified to change the occupancy status from. Owner occupied convert dwelling to non-owner occupied convert dwelling with two units. Other than that, Mr. Chair, we have three potential hearings scheduled for May twenty. I think it's twenty seventh, that's the next meeting in May after the ninth. Um, other than.
Twenty third.
Twenty third, my apologies, thank you, twenty third, and other than that, nothing else in the books, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Okay. Alright, any other matters that, um, members wish to bring up? The one thing I will say is that we've got some new members, um, on the, we have Mr. Sloveter as a new full member, we've got four. Um, not all the new, but we have four, um, alternate members, and at some point in the near future, we're gonna try to schedule a. An administrative meeting, just to, um, especially for the new members to go run through the. Um, the duties and responsibilities of being a ZBA member and allow them to ask any questions and to give them the benefit of all your experience. Uh, as ZBA members, and we'll try to schedule that as soon as possible. There's other sort of, um, ministerial work that we have to do once a year, and we'll do, we'll do that as well. So, um, we'll have that scheduled, and maybe we can do that one of these, um, main meetings, but we'll see, Rob. We'll have, uh, and if, if, have they had a chance, the new, the new members had a chance to meet with staff and go over the, not yet?
Not yet, I'm still trying to, to do that, I'm in the process of scheduling meetings with them. Uh, right now. To my knowledge, Hilda and Sarah are still continuing to serve. Hilda was reappointed for another term to twenty twenty five. Sarah's gonna continue the rest of her term till the end of June, and then, um, two new members. Are associates whose terms were effective immediately, so we have two new associates who can start taking over for public hearings when they're available to.
Yep, and they, they understand all the papers they have to sign and the consumptive interest and all that.
Yep, all that stuff, they were provide all that, so they're good.
Alright, well, um, I think that's, uh, everything I have. If there's nothing else. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I've just gotta be the second to that, I know.
I think Mr. White. Mr. White gets the second already.
Yeah. Yep.
You guys have all seconded two, two, three at a time for several motions, you're making it hard for me.
He's even, he's even into tomorrow.
It's that trans, transatlantic delay, you would have been, you would have had more seconds, but you've got that transatlantic delay. Alright, this is not debatable, but it is, you can joke about it. The motion's not debatable, all, uh, chair says aye. Uh, Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Meadows.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Sloveter.
A reluctant yes.
Alright, have a good week, guys, thank you all, and we did it by nine twelve, so.